If you want to start with a roll call.
Certainly, Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Byron.
Present.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Cantor, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Muschak.
Present.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
And Mr. Shulman.
Here.
All right. The first item is a review, further review. And action on application 2022-05 R/M/SP. Merit Station Norwalk LLC 67, 69, 79, 87, 111, 117, 129, 135, 155, 156. 201 Glover Avenue and 2 Oakwood Avenue, North 7. Why don't, why don't we begin, Mr. Waters, with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Waters, General Counsel to Building and Land Technology, representing the applicant here this evening. With me is Chris Boxall, who is with Spiegel's Architects. They've been working with us on the master plan for this property. And I asked him to participate on a couple of the aspects that we'll be talking about this evening. Basically, a couple of things just to bring you up to date. And then, and then a few things that we wanted to broach with you this evening. First of all, we did provide you with a revised overall master plan. There had been some piecemeal changes to it, as you know, especially around Buildings 2.2 and 2.3. It was a bit confusing flipping between things so that by doing that, we have now created a single set of documents that is where we are at this point. Subject to, of course, change as we continue our process. And I'll go through a bit of that in just a minute. The other thing to communicate to you is that we have been in touch with OSTA at the state. And we had some good news from them this week that they have agreed. We have, our consultant has relayed to us, they have agreed that our concept of Phase 1, which is the first three buildings, while it will require formal OSTA review, and that only occurs after municipal approval. They have agreed that the only improvements that they would require as part of that approval is some striping to extend a couple of the turning lanes on Grist Mill and some rephasing of the, of lights, timing, things which does not require any physical changes. It's just the, the calculations and the way that the light timing actually is configured. So all of that is eminently doable, and it does not require for those three buildings any of the more significant traffic improvements that we know would be coming down the road, pardon the pun, for the remainder of the project. So, so what we had suggested was appropriate based upon our traffic analysis has now been confirmed by OSTA as well. With that, if I may, I'm going to share my screen and go through just a few of the slides from the the new master plan deck. Again, what I'm, what you have here, and this is the same picture you've seen before. It's, it's a bit old, given the fact that the, the area that I'm circling right now is now the curb. But I wanted to kind of remind you of the shape of the master plan properties. It's long and it's narrow. And unfortunately, for planning purposes, the area where the train station is, is right at about the narrowest point. So that becomes part of the issue with, with what we can do in that particular location. In addition to that, because a lot of the area to the east of Glover Avenue is either the train station or its train tracks, there's really no way to, to, to involve that area as part of the inactive streetscape. So everything really has to be focused to the west side of Glover until you get to the bend, in any event. And the last thing is kind of a site constraint, just to, to remind people of is that while you're seeing it from above and it's, it looks flat, in fact, it's a rather significant drop off along the westerly border of the properties. The, the properties that are to the west of our property are significantly higher. And so there's some topographic challenges that occur as a result of that. So now we have the master plan, which includes the redone footprint for 2.2, 2.3. We know that there was some confusion as to the dark green areas being whether they were open space or whether they were roofs or what they were. So we've changed those to a kind of a gray color to make it clear that they are, in fact, structures and that there's things on top of them, but they are not down to grade. We missed this one down here. These two little areas down here are, in fact, buildings as well. It's part of the, the stripes, you'll recall, are part of where the retail is located. But the, but in fact, it is a one-story, an oversized one-story along the front here for these retail areas. We also changed the calculations a bit. The numbers are slightly different. You'll see that the total number of units is 1290. That's because that actually is the total density that is permitted based upon the area of the site mathematically. When we originally had contemplated, it was about 1,300 units instead. It was because we were using the zone change map, and the zone change goes out to the center line of the street. And so we were counting some area that we couldn't count. But the 1290 is actually accurate based upon the survey. The other thing that we did, which is more significant, is instead of showing proposed parking spaces, we've changed it to required parking spaces. The difference being that, first of all, the proposed spaces were calculated initially on the basis of your old parking requirements. And it also included ways to either round up or whatever in order to address construction practicalities of, of, you know, a full floor of parking and what have you. But in reality, what we want to talk about is what's required, which is significantly less. Now we've taken the required parking, and it's based upon the new regulation, the 1.3 parking spaces per unit. It reduces the total parking that we had proposed by about 400 parking spaces, which is a significant reduction throughout the site. Doesn't mean that it will, that there will actually be exactly 1,760 parking spaces when everything is built out. Because again, there will be some practicalities of building out, you know, a full floor, a half floor of parking and not just exactly the, the right number, which may not make sense from a construction standpoint. But it does give a much better order of magnitude as to what is, in fact, going to be developed as we go through all of this.
David, if I may, are, are these, excuse me, are these parking numbers acceptable to your lender?
Yes, yes, they, they meet the requirements of, of the code. They are acceptable. And in fact, interesting, a, a brief anecdote. When we were first developing this plan, we felt that the parking that was required for it was more than sufficient by a lot. And we did an analysis of, I think it was the curb building A, as well as 1 Glover and 399 Main Avenue being the three multifamily developments that were in this area around the Glover Train Station. And our actual counts came out at almost exactly 1.3 parking spaces per dwelling unit. So we were going to come in and propose that. And then your staff pointed out the fact that the, the commission had already been in the works in, in modifying the required parking down to 1.3. And so we said, well, then obviously, we're very happy with, with where you've gotten to. So, no, that it, it will not be an issue with a lender. As long as it complies with zoning, they will be, it'll be perfectly acceptable to them.
Thank you.
The, the 1,760 spaces does take advantage also of the mixed-use credit between retail and residential. It does not count the parallel parking that will be out on the street. Because as you know, that doesn't count for zoning purposes. But it does also include the 83 parking spaces that are our, our commitment to the DOT for the train station. And as we, as I, I'll remind you again, that our obligation to them, because they were going to put and have put, in fact, a, they've improved a 83 space parking lot out there. We have the, the right to be able to put those, that within a building. And we did agree with them that when it comes time to develop that building, that if they wanted to have additional parking, that, that we would agree to work with them on that. It would be at their expense to, to add the additional parking that they would want beyond 83 spaces. And if we did that, again, it's in Building 2.1. We would just go down further into the ground because theirs is, in fact, below-ground parking to begin with. It's, it's a full floor below ground that would be the 83 parking spaces. And then looking at it from a perspective block drawing, again, just a reminder that we start with a relatively tall building at the southern end. It drops down around the square. We then come to the building 2.1, which is 11 stories, including the retail and parking levels. We then have Buildings 2.2, 2.3, which start with a ground floor, first floor of, of retail and amenities with residential above and a parking garage behind, I keep touching that too much. And then up at 3.1, again, we have parking with, and amenities and units coming down to the ground for, at the 15-story buildings. The one of the things that we're still working with and, and we're in discussion with your staff and your consultant on is the alignment of Building 2.2 and 2.3, and I'll touch on that in a minute. But we think that, at least now, we have a baseline of, of where we are at this point on, on this proposal. So what we wanted to do this evening is to talk about two things specifically and then, and then give you a preview of two others. The one thing we wanted to talk about, I know it has been a, a source of, of interest to the commission as to the town square, the size of it, how it would be, how it would be used, things like that. And I have asked, again, our, our consultant from Spiegel's to be able to talk about that and, and, and what it really means. So we'll do that hopefully this evening and to your satisfaction. The second thing is, we want to talk about the streetscape itself. We're talking, again, when you see these types of plans in kind of block areas, it's not particularly detailed. But in fact, we do know and we've provided you with the, what we have done up at the northern end of Glover Avenue as far as the streetscape is concerned. And we've indicated in the design guidelines that we had provided to you. We had shown, I think I've got them here. We again had said, yeah, we're going to do the same type of thing. What we have not really discussed is what happens in the area that is between the sidewalk and the building itself. We've talked about that it will be granite curbs, you'll have the trees and the lights and the, and the, the snow shelf area and the wider sidewalks and what have you. What we haven't talked about is really what happens in this area here as we go down. And so again, Chris will be able to, to give some indication as to what our thoughts are and, and how we would handle that. It, it, just as a preview, it will, it will be different in some ways in different locations, because where some of it, you have residential that comes all the way down to the ground. You don't necessarily want to have sidewalks that go right up to somebody's window so that the public can peer in. On the other hand, where you have retail that is at the ground on, on the first floor of a building, you do want to be able to have an area where there could be patio tables or, or simply to get to the front door of the retail establishment. So again, we'll have Chris speak a little bit to, to our thoughts on the streetscape piece. The other two pieces that I know we have, we've been talking about and which we are not prepared tonight, but hope to be prepared by your next meeting to be able to wrap up, would be a further discussion on 2.2, 2.3 and its alignment. And also the building design suggestions and guidelines. I know that your staff and consultant have said that they had some thoughts about that, and we're looking forward to discussing those with them so that we can then get that piece of it put together as well. And I think that that then should put us into a position where we've, we've provided, we hope, everything that would be needed in order to, to really move this thing forward. So with that, and your permission, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And Chris, if I could have you introduce yourself and then talk a little bit about the concept of the town square. You're muted.
You know, I've been doing this for so long on these Zoom calls, and I still find myself talking while I'm muted. Anyways, nice to meet everybody. I'm Chris Boxall. I'm a partner at Spiegel's and Partners Architects, based in New Haven, Connecticut. What I'm hoping to share with you today and what David asked me to look at specifically, and I, I had the file open and I lost it, opened it again, was specifically about the, the plaza. Let me share my screen. We've identified this one. One spot that's actually very close to our office and I'll try not to make everyone sick here by flying around too much, but this is downtown New Haven. And I'll meet back out just a little bit, show you, this is the New Haven Green. This is the State Street Train Station. And the spot in particular that we wanted to reference, because it's almost exactly the same size as what we've proposed at this point, which is about 100 feet by 110 feet. And we thought, showing you an example of this space and how it's activated and how it's used might give you, everybody, a better sense of the scale of it and how it can be activated and how it's, at least how it's used in an urban environment right now. So this is Pitkin Plaza in New Haven. So right next to it, you have 360 State Street, which is a 30-story residential tower. You have a federal building and another residential tower with some, it's a paver, it's approximately 90 feet wide by 110 feet in length. So very much sort of an urban environment, and I will share some images now. Again, there's, there's, just going to randomly go through a couple images. So again, bounded by buildings on mostly two sides. The other side is a parking garage, and then you have the street front. During the day when it's not, you know, not as much activity with the use of public art, plantings, and we have a couple, right here is the G Cafe, which is a coffee shop and a bread shop on the opposite side of the the, the left-hand side here is Trinity. It's an Irish pub. They do a great job, the, the city of activating and having programs in the evening for movie night in the plaza.
Chris, I think you're, you're still on the, the aerial that you started with. I don't know if you had been showing.
Okay, it didn't switch over.
You might have to unshare and then reshare.
Yep.
Always doing that. May I just suggest, Mr. Chairman, that the, the two buildings that flank it on the street are very comparable in scale to what is being proposed for this project.
Want to make sure I'm picking the right one here. I think it's this one. So let me go back. Sorry, I I didn't realize I wasn't sharing. So, so this is the, the plaza when it's not activated. This is that, that coffee shop I was referring to earlier, some planters. And really what it does is it, it's place-making and it's curated throughout the day. They have movies in the plaza in the evening. By curating and creating programs that activate the plaza really help activate it. So it's not just left for people to fill it. They actually, you know, promote events like movies in the plaza that really start to attract and create a sense of community from the people who live in different buildings and bring them together. This is a, a street view to show the, you know, it's not oversized. And I think what makes this plaza so successful is actually the intimacy that it brings. In plazas that sometimes are too large, you feel like you're lost, you know. And at other times, you know, trying to right-size a plaza so that whether you're there with just one other person or if you're there with 100 other people, that there's a sense of place and you feel like you belong in there. That's, that always adds to the success of these plazas. You know, when you look at, you know, places in, in Boston, New York, the big, big plazas tend to be vacant because people feel uncomfortable because they're so big. So.
Chris, Chris, how far is this from the green?
It's a block. It's one block from the green.
So people do have access there to, in very close proximity, additional open space as opposed to our location where this is the open space.
Correct, yeah. So that the, the New Haven Green is largely used for very large events where they have arts and ideas and other events. But I'll tell you that these smaller venues like this tend to be more active because of the, sort of the human scale of this space, and it's along the public way. When you go out to the green, largely it's, you know, it's, there's buses and it's people cutting across town. So it becomes a, a passage to get from one side to the other. But because of the scale of it, people don't typically hang out there because you, you feel like, I, somebody used this analogy before, a meatball lost in the sauce. You know, it's, you feel, it's so out of scale that people don't necessarily want to be there, even though it's a really pleasant and nice space.
So, but, but if a couple of students want to throw around a frisbee, they can do it. Here, you can't really do anything that active.
That's, that's correct. So I think that's where we're looking at, you know, where we tried to increase the scale of the, the outdoor open space near Raccoon Creek. And tried to, we actually, in this latest rendition, we actually pulled the building away from the Raccoon Creek to create additional open space that would be green space also. So I think we're, right now, just on some rough calculations, we're about two and a half acres of open space in that general area.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, remember that all of these various, the residential buildings that we're building will have active open space as well. A lot of it will be on the roofs, there will be pools, there will be things like that. So it, it's not as if this is the only place where you can go outdoors. In fact, we, in our experience here in Stanford in particular, even though we've got a, a very active boardwalk, the, the area around our square tends to be relatively limited because people do things in their apartment complex as much as they do any, anything else.
And then this, these were just a couple of images where they, they hosted like a World Cup soccer watching party that, you know, so, I mean, this is the extreme where you, you know, you have this many people. But I think we, what we wanted to do is show you, you know, sort of maximum capacity and then what it really looks like during, like, a, a typical day. And what, Buildings 1.1 and 1.2 could potentially have a restaurant or something like that in the first level?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that if, if that could happen, that would make it, you know, you, I would say if you have a food or beverage, you know, whether it's a bar, coffee shop, something that's going to promote activity and get people to enjoy sort of an indoor/outdoor environment so that, you know, when you see people sitting outside, it draws you there. It sort of encourages you to, to join them. I think the one thing that, you know, we've recognized is in our, our diagrams is the backside of our plaza right now hasn't been, you know, we need something to be a backdrop, something that you can visually set up and, and sort of complete the square. Our other concern about making the, the town square too wide is it starts to, if there's too big of a gap in between buildings, the street, the streetscape starts to feel incomplete. So, you know, it's a, it's a very fine line of, you know, what's too far and then what's too close. So we're trying to right-size the plaza so that it, it feels active at all times, but not, so that the buildings aren't so separated. Again, we don't, because of the linear nature of the development, we, we really have to activate only one side of the street. So we want to make sure that there, there always feels like there's connectivity from one building to the other. That's the other thing we're, we're wrestling with. So this is.
I have a comment, actually. Mike Muschak here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to say I, I've been skeptical of the scale of the space all along, but I, I did a deeper dive in the last few days, actually went up there and looked, you know, where it's going to be, which is, you know, opposite the train, the new train station. There is Western Sky visible above the apartments, I guess they are, behind, slightly up on a hill. But there's a, there's a sky corridor that is kind of, you know, to infinity, to the west, which I wasn't taking into account in looking at this space. I was thinking of this more like a, you know, like the space you're showing in New Haven that's completely surrounded by buildings. And with that in mind, it, there is extra space, as you just mentioned, on the far end of the square that is not really dealt with in the master plan, but there's potential there. You know, to capture some more space than just. You know, to capture some more space than just what's between the buildings. But I would also suggest if you had to give up some retail space on the north building, which faces south, to create an arcade, maybe ten feet wide or twelve feet wide, the arcade would shade people in that hot sun, and that's gonna be very hot, brutally hot in the summer with the southern, even with the taller building, you know, the sun goes around. So, if there was an arcade with a retail space setback, it would mean giving up some square footage, but you would then have a sheltered, more hospitable space that would be included in the plaza on the ground plane, but it would be tucked under the building. If that was doable, I, I would highly recommend that as an option, not so much on the south sides, on the south building, because there's no direct sun, but on the north building. And, you know, the precedent there is all over Europe and, and certainly lots of urban spaces here. But we often don't think about that, you know, how important it is to tuck out of the sun. But again, it's your retail space, so that's, that's a decision you'd have to make, but I'm not here to say you have to do it. I'm just, I, I've looked at going through this space and, you know, I was looking at the Trevi Fountain in Rome as a similar space, which always is packed shoulders to shoulder with people, like the picture you showed. And thinking, wow, that's really small, but I, I'm, I'm convinced now by everything you're saying that, that this is, you know, this is more logical. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. The, the distinction I make between the space we're looking at on the screen and the neighborhood on Glover is that the neighborhood on Glover, unlike the inner city, is an isolated space. Completely isolated within its own borders from the rest of the city. And with very limited opportunity for, for active recreational use for the residents. I mean, if this is to be as Attorney Water describes it, as a live work-play area, it seems to me anyway that the live portion, as nice as the, the apartments may be, is, is missing something important. I mean, as a person who grew up within walking distance of two good-sized parks, I know I would feel very cramped with, within this space.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, just to clarify, if the Raccoon Creek Park were significantly larger than what is currently graphically shown, would that alleviate your concerns?
I, I think, I think it may. I'd need, I'd, I'd need to see specifically what it looks like. But it might. And then.
So in other words, it doesn't have to be.
I think, I think that is, that, that, that we ought to have that if not fully designed substantially designed before we move the project forward. That the design effort, excuse me, needs to go into that just as it does into the design of the buildings.
Lou.
Yeah.
If I may, Tammy Langall is here. I, I think I'm, I'm pretty familiar with that spot that you're showing in New Haven. At least I think I am. I was up there this winter. And the density of New Haven does not at all compare to what you're trying to create at, at Merritt Seven. And I think you would have to have every, you know, person that lived in all of those buildings down there to get the complete coverage of the, of the patio area. And I, I advocate for open space. I don't think Norwalk is trying to be New Haven. I don't think we're trying to achieve that kind of density. And I think the people that are going to hopefully live in this area are probably looking at Norwalk differently, that we are a more town-like setting, and these apartment buildings that you're proposing are very city and very urban, and it's, it's not a comparison to either New Haven or to what you did in Stanford, where that area was factory, if you will, and the, the use was already in use, where you're taking empty land and filling it up. And I, I would love for it to be activated with people walking around, but I'm very skeptical of that because it's not happening on West Avenue, which has a much more urban feel to it. And I think maybe that's why the people that are living on West Avenue are attracted, but they're not out on the street. And I'm not sure what this is going to be, if it's going to be apartment buildings stuck in what was a green space, or if it's going to be a little city in and of itself, but if you only have two or three retail stores, it's not gonna be very appealing. Like, what are you gonna go to? One coffee shop, and that's it? And so how do you get all of these over a thousand people that are living there out onto the street utilizing these spaces? I think the Raccoon Park is very important. People will like it because they can have some sort of connection with nature, as opposed to the New Haven site that you're showing is completely urban and tar all around, except for until you get over to the green. So, I'm kind of rambling on, but I think we're trying to achieve something different in Norwalk. We're not New Haven and we're not Stanford. And we want this to be nice. It's obviously going to be a very large project that will be rather defining. But I think we have to define it for us, not for some other community.
Can I add something here? On West Avenue, people aren't walking along West Avenue, but in the waypoint, they have a enclosed plaza, and that is very active all summer long. We go to, we eat in restaurants there. Outside, there are people walking around, little children. It's a very festive, very active area. This plaza I think would turn out to be very much like that plaza in waypoint. Plus, you have all of those big office buildings, and people at lunchtime coming out of the big office buildings, they would have access across, you know, there'll be access from the office buildings to where the apartments are. One question I had, and I agree with everyone, that Raccoon Park is a recreational opportunity, is very important. But one question I had is whether all of the buildings would have pools and gyms? How many pools and gyms would be available to those residents in the buildings?
The. Commissioner Wells, normally in our buildings, I, I can tell you what we have at the curb because that actually is, is a good example. Initially, when it was approved, there was a pool for each of the three buildings. What we realized was that there are people that like to have the swimming pool, and there are people that don't like to have the swimming pool. So what we did was we took out the pool from Building B and instead put in a different type of landscaped, hardscaped area in that courtyard so that people that want to have that type of an experience have it. So I would say that, but the other two buildings do have pools. So I would say that in general, each of the buildings, given the size, will have, or pairs of buildings, such as, you know, two point two, two point three, and three point one, three point two, they would each have a pool. And that there would be additional outdoor and indoor recreation as well.
So with gyms and pools, there are places for people to exercise.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Recreation within the buildings as well as the plaza. And I think Raccoon Park can be overstated as an important amenity for the entire development, you know. That adds real recreational appeal to it, I think.
Right. I think that one of the things that we've, we know from the work that we've done, among other things, with our tenants at the curb, is we've been able to figure out that what they want and what they're looking for. And the, the concept that it's now going to be right off of the Norwalk River Valley Trail. The fact that we're now going to be able to, and, and, and on our master plan, we showed that we're actually creating some additional walking paths. One of them we'll need to get some private property owner agreement on. But, but the one up by Raccoon Brook will then go on to state property and reach out to the end of Oakwood Avenue. So it means people can now start to actually walk around the block, which they can't do right now. Both because of the topography and because of the, the way that everything is laid out with, on the streets. There is no grid of any kind in that area. So, I think that we know that people are looking for kind of an ability to have an active lifestyle, to be able to walk around. We see it already, actually, with the, the neighborhood that's right there. And so this will actually, that's part of the component. So you really will have the, the component of people being able to walk around the neighborhood, the component of the amenities that are at the buildings themselves. And you'll have this type of an amenity with the town square, where there will be an area where you, you can have some supportive retail and, and a place to gather for events and things like that. And we've done a very good job, I, I would suggest in, in figuring out the types of things that, that bring people out, whether it's, you know, food trucks, or whether it's yoga in the park or in the town square, or whether it's, you know, a, a dog-walking class or things like that. We, we've done a lot of those types of things. We actually hired programmers from Bryant Park to work with us to, to develop plans and programs for the south end of Stanford, and that's been very successful in being able to try and figure out how to activate things. So I think that it's, it's a question of not having one type of amenity, but being able to have a variety of different things that are all sort of compatible with each other.
Yeah, David, I would also add that I, you know, using the Pitkin Plaza is really, it was only here to represent the approximate scale of it, to put some context. That what happens, you know, in the North Seven is gonna be unique unto itself, and it's gonna take on the character of the community that it builds. So, I, you know, I, I know we, we sort of, it's hard not to get sucked into everything that I'm showing you, but think of it as more of this scale and, and how it can be, it feels active and complete even when it's not used and when it's used at different sizes. I think that's all we were wanting to do is just to show the context of that. Should I keep going to, you want to talk about the streetscapes?
Yes, please, if you would, Chris.
So. Here we go. So, th- these are. Am I sharing this? I'm not sharing.
In the same picture.
Yeah, let me unshare again and share again. Sorry, it's a really small image, but I think it starts to talk about some of the context of the roadway, having a drive lane on street parking, the ability to have a snow shelf with some trees, and enough depth in the sidewalks to allow pedestrians, runners, different people to be able to exercise and also have some space for cafes. So just, that's sort of what we're aiming for is in regards to the complete streets. There's a variety of different ways that we can achieve these types of complete streets, but I think what we want to do is because we only have one side of the street, we want to make sure that it's wide enough, the sidewalk, to be able to accommodate passive people who are either dining or taking a break, and then other people who are either running, jogging, or moving, while we're activating and creating a buffer from the street also. And also providing some trees and lights to give it scale and to provide some shade. Along this walk, you know, we also want to curate moments. It's so important that we create moments along the passageway so that it creates interest. To just have the same sidewalk and trees the whole way, there's, you need variety in order to create moments along the path. And those moments are what are gonna make it unique in, you know, hey, let's get together at the lamp posts, as in this image. Something that might be unique to one location that starts to give, you know, the south end some identity for the square. So, you know, using architectural elements and landscaping features can create that, make that sidewalk really something special, even small, you know, areas where we can open it up and do some public art. Also, would give us the ability to have a place, note, when I was talking about these nodes where people can pause and, and hang out and meet with other people while there are other sections that might be thinner, and they're really more about activating the retail storefronts.
Chris, do you have an intuitive feeling of how frequent those special moments would occur? Is it like every hundred feet, every five hundred feet?
We, we, I think when we looked at it initially, we had, I believe it was like nine to eleven moments, but because, and one started at the beginning and the end of Glover. So they became like, almost like gateway moments coming on to the, the new master plan. So you felt like you were greeted. You know, you're not just coming down the road, but you're greeted by, you know, public art or an opening, or a, a moment that was landscaped that you felt like, oh, okay, this is a nice moment. And it might even be a, a marker that you say, again, meet me at, you know, the fountain or something like that.
So it's, it's maybe every two hundred feet or something like that?
Yeah, because if they're too close together, then they're not special. It just becomes this linear event. So what you want to do is break them up so that at moments where you want people, there's enough space to pause, you, you, you capture them then, and they can keep on going. But these, these moments, especially on the pedestrian level or the human scale, that's, you, you interact with it so much differently on the streetscape versus you do on something, you know, the top of a tower. You know, you would never, really, your eye wouldn't draw you to the top of the building, but it might draw you to a storefront.
Chris, are those, are those indicated on your revised site plan? I can't recall. Approximately where you're thinking that there, you would locate them?
No, we, we, we don't have those, but we could certainly highlight those. Again, I, I think we were trying not to get too granular on some of these items. Every time we started to get into details like that, we, you know, it was, we didn't know where to stop and start with those things, but I think that that might be a good, you know, that's easy enough to show.
I, I'm just thinking that, you know, down the road, three years from now, that there's a, a new phase of the development that comes in. And if we don't have some of these things, and I'm, I'm not saying you have to show exactly what it's going to look like, but it would be good to indicate on, on the master plan at a, you know, we had, within a pretty good proximity that there's going to be this kind of cutout area of some kind of social gathering space, or whatever it turns out to be. That we know there's going to be one in this vicinity. That way, if, if it's, and if it's not shown on the map, then it's harder for us to say, well, we want one installed, but it was never shown on the map to begin with.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's really easy to sort of highlight because I think, again, the spacing of them is gonna be critical also. And, you know, there might even be an opportunity to do, you know, mobile art galleries at some point to, you know, depending on the, what the community becomes, it could be an active art area also.
I wanna just add something here. These photos are a real game changer for me because I wasn't aware of that, you can almost call it a linear park along Glover.
That uh you can almost call it a linear park along uh Glover. That was, you know, just shown as a as a generic space. Uh but this this is. Anyway, this is a whole way of looking at it that I certainly wasn't looking at those spaces. So it it has, it's very helpful to have that, uh as Steve just mentioned on the plan. Uh and I just want to add in this photo, you can see the importance of that overhang on the right. Uh in terms of, you know, creating shelter and space. Uh however you achieve that, but how important that is back in the square that we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, and I I think if if we don't do moments like this. There there's not, we're not going to create the interest in getting people activated and moving on the street. It's it's almost a necessity to create unique situations along that sidewalk to activate it.
And I can't help but throw in, the three colors on that sculpture would have been really nice on the curb. If you had varied the orange between the three buildings, I'll leave it at that. That's all. I just, I couldn't help myself. They're all orange, but you know, orange, red, yellow would have been kind of fun. Anyway, that's all.
And I imagine these moments also bring people out of the work buildings into the square, getting people activated, getting people out. Like, that's the thing on West Ave is there's not a lot of workplaces there. So people leave throughout the day and go to work and they. They aren't there during the afternoon to go to lunch or to get out of the, get out of the their work offices. And I lived on West Ave, I can tell you that. So I I love that this is going to try to bring people out into the spaces and fill it with actually people versus people that are sitting at their desk to eat their lunch.
Yeah, I think the commissioners, um I I like what I'm seeing now. It's looking more real life. And uh puts myself to ease more than I did before. So I appreciate the updates, uh David and Chris.
Thank you. So we have some homework still to do, as obviously. And we definitely, as I said, there are two other pieces to this that uh we hope to be back to you uh at your next meeting. To really having looked at two point two, two point three. Uh and the relationship to Raccoon Brook and the and the park. Uh as one area and then the other is the building design suggestions and guidelines. That we'll be working with your staff on. But we thought that it was better to take and focus a little bit on some of these public spaces for tonight so that we could. Hopefully give you a better picture of what was going on um and and work our way uh onward to to the next set.
That has, that's been very helpful, David.
Good, thank you.
I have one question if I can move.
Go ahead, Nick.
This is the one piece that keeps sticking with me. I drive up seven, up seven over Gris Mill every day to drop my kids off at tutor time. And I'm starting to see more and more people walk on their shoulder at Gris Mill. And I am so worried someone is going to get clipped by a car, by a bus, by a truck that's driving there. And I know it's not part of the original, like it's not in your purview right now of being able to control a pedestrian walkway there. But that is the one thing that is scaring the hell out of me with this project. Of of and you know, I've been generally supportive of this from the get go, and I think it's a really exciting thing for Norwalk. That's just the one thing I want to leave with you. And I I know we've talked about it before and you guys have, you know, future plans there, but if there's something. More tangible there, I can just imagine the public is just going to be really loud about some about that of just. People walking and like the last thing I would want is some tragedy to happen and then it's a, and I told you so sort of thing. I'm saying that I would say that, but like you can just imagine how that plays itself out.
Nick, are you saying that they're walking in the street versus on the sidewalk?
There is no sidewalk at Gris Mill is the problem.
Okay.
So Gris Mill is where everyone dumps out from seven.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
You have that connector there.
Yes.
And you know, it's just a lot of activity. And then what people are going, they're going from the Glover area, there's a bus stop just north of the Sunoco. That people are walking to go to.
Yeah.
And there's no, anyway, sorry, I'll stop at that.
Now, I, Nick, I I uh agree with you. I've seen that and. You're right. I mean, somebody is going to get hurt. The state unfortunately is kind of married to these wider traffic lanes. We could never figure out why, because the standards at the state and federal level all call for ten foot lanes. But they insist on eleven and twelve, uh the only state on the east coast that does. Uh if they had reduced all those lane widths to ten feet, which would be wide enough for any large vehicle. They had certainly at low speeds, they would have a four foot shoulder on each side painted. Uh that would be not an official sidewalk, but they at least would be a safe buffer. So I'm I'm going to bring this up with the T M P, uh certainly to make a case with the state, because that's just paint. They can do that, they can do that in one night. They can go out and grind out the stripes, narrow the lanes and create a shoulder there. That at least is a walkable shoulder uh for bikes and pedestrians, at least for now, because it's going to be years before. We actually get a new layout there, but uh you know, that kind of thing would be easy to do. So thank you for bringing that up because you're, there is a solution right in front of us.
Yeah, I'd be happy to support Mike in whatever you need.
A- as would we, and and that actually has been on our radar. Um I, Carl Keener and I did the uh. Uh the walk around the neighborhood with the mayor on and the bike walk. At that point, it was the task force instead of the committee. Uh and and we all took our lives in our hands, walking up Gris Mill about thirty or forty of us. At a time uh uh with people whizzing by. You know, there are a couple of things that will slightly alleviate it, but not address it. Uh the uh. Including the spur of the Norwalk River Valley Trail that's going to go under the bridge. Uh which will help to to allow pedestrians to move further north. Um along where the Norwalk River Valley Trail is now being developed to go north up into Wilton. Uh and then, of course, the uh the the fact that you'll be able to go across the train tracks uh at the train station will also allow in that location for some. But I do think that uh there's no question at all that it's been in our minds as well, that we need to be able to get. Uh pedestrians safely down to Main Avenue in that location and and similarly. Uh the uh at the southern end as well.
Yeah, it's another terrible down there.
Which uh and that's all designed as part of the uh the project that's supposed to start in twenty twenty five.
But Dave, at the train station, they're locked in on the other side of the train station, right? There's no, once they get to the train station, they can go either side. They can't, there's no access point to, I forget whether that's Daco, whoever that is, up to their plaza to cross over, correct?
No, 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 they can. There's actually. There there is a, there's going to be a pedestrian passageway across the tracks. That will, you'll be able to go up from the the platform, go up, go across the tracks and it'll drop down onto the plaza level. At Merritt Seven, so you can then walk right out.
Can walk exit out. It's not only employee access. Okay.
Exactly.
It's, it's good to know too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Attorney Waters, excuse me, did you also say that there is going to be pedestrian access under the. By the train up by, sorry, uh Gris Mill Road? Did you say it's going to go under part of the Norwalk River Valley Trail?
Yes, as part of the, as part of the approval of the curb. Uh what we did at at that time, it uh it was thought that the trail itself would come down Glover and then go. Under the merit through the train uh uh tunnel at that location. Uh apparently DOT is objected to that, so that's why the the trail is now going on the west side of the expressway. But what we had agreed to and and have are in the process of installing right now at the third building of the curb. Um is a a spur of the uh Norwalk River Valley Trail that you'll be able to go from Glover Avenue. Go along the north side of Building C and then go north from there. Uh and it goes under the bridge where the uh where the train and the river is. So the the Gris Mill Bridge, uh there's there's sufficient access there that apparently uh it will be able to connect. And we've actually, we've agreed and it's a condition of our approval of the curb. That we install the segment that's on our property, which we're in the process of doing, and that we um pay for. Uh the installation of the uh segment that then goes up to the bridge, which we've now posted. Uh the funds to do with Public Works or with zoning, I don't remember which. Um but that's all in place. And in the meantime. The uh Norwalk River Valley Trail people themselves are bringing the trail down from Kent Road. Uh a segment that comes down from Kent Road down to basically Gris Mill. Uh so this, so this spur will then attach to that.
Thank you. Glad to hear that.
Oh, may I just add, since you're on that subject real quick. That I was looking at the open space that you have at Raccoon Creek or whatever it is, Brook. But not thinking uh of the, again, a linear park, that phrase I use, I was just mentioning it for the street, but. The NRVT is a linear park and a linear park is, you know, that is what it sounds like. It's just a long skinny. Uh park, open space, but it accesses much wider space visually around it. And that is for walking, bicycling, uh even, you know, it's ADA accessible. So even someone. That with mobility challenges could do that. But that linear park, once it's connected under the bridge there. Uh that's also a game changer because then you kind of have access to a much larger open space system. Even though it's long and skinny and cumulatively, it's four miles is the will will walk section. That goes from Broad Street up over Gris Mill and all the way up to Kent. And then beyond that, hopefully someday. Uh that's not approved yet, but they're working on it uh from Kent Road all the way up to the center of center of Wilton. So that would be a huge uh park. Skinny, long park that's, if you counted the acres, it would be hundreds of acres probably. Uh even though it might only be fifteen feet wide, uh but it would be miles long. And so that that that. Has made me come around to being more uh. Less inclined to say, hey, you need, this raccoon park needs to be a lot bigger. For open space when you take into account the linear park. Sorry, it takes so long to say that, but I think you know what I'm saying. Yeah, I think that the 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 spur with the Norwalk River Valley Trail does a number of things. It it really is a game changer because. Of the fact that not only does it create access to a much larger area, but it also allows people to take a bicycle. And bike up to some of the establishments, the retail establishments that are uh right at Kent Road. And and I park in that area, uh because you're right there. And you can do it safely as opposed to uh taking your life in your hands, going down uh Gris Mill. Uh and and then crossing on Main Avenue too. So I I think that it it really does create. Um a very nice uh ability to be able to spread yourself out and and to. Uh to get out to a variety of different opportunities.
David, I think it's also important to know when when some of these things are expected to happen. We have some idea uh about uh in improvements that DOT is going to undertake.
Yes.
But it would be helpful to understand um when uh these um. Uh enlargements in the Norwalk River Valley Trail are going to occur. I mean, if they're going to occur more or less simultaneously with um. Uh the uh beginning of this development, that's a wonderful thing. If on the other hand, it's five or ten years out. Uh then we might wish to see some other improvements made. Uh and not and not uh just a build and wait for that to come along.
The, I I can tell you that the the section of the Norwalk River Valley Trail from Kent Road south to the Gris Mill area. Is actually under construction right now. Uh and this the spur that we are obligated to create is also. Uh just about done. The only, it it it's part of the, actually, it's part of the landscaping and site planning and and grading of. Building C. Uh so once Building C is, uh the construction is done, it will be done too. And it's actually, you may recall. It was a requirement of this commission that it be completed in order to get our final C out.
Right.
And I I did hear through the grapevine, I can't, I don't have a official reference, but that Metro North gave an approval. To run the trail under the bridge alongside the railroad track.
Did they really? That would be great.
And that was, uh I heard that uh at a dinner party last week, so.
Mike, would you be a little more specific?
I'll call Metro North, but it was someone on the Bike Walk Task Force who is intimately involved and was. He said, I have really great news. And so that was, I'm pretty sure that's a done deal because Metro North needed to give their approval. Even though it's a different bay, you know, there's there's pillars between the railroad track and this left other section, but. They control the right of way. So it was, it did require their.
Yes.
They're not always the easiest to work with as. Yeah, that's for sure. And I will say that the um, you know, our design of the improvements to. Glover Avenue itself, the street itself. Uh includes bike lanes on both sides and they, it would run the entire length. I think that. Once you, once you make the bend on uh uh at the south end, I think it becomes a shallow, but. But it's actual physical bike lanes all the way down until you get to that elbow. So it the it becomes a very uh usable uh and safe. Method of using the 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 trail along through that Glover Avenue area. And that's already been designed and. And uh is part of actually DOT's improvements that they're doing as part of the train station.
Dave, is that it?
That's it.
You for this evening?
That's it for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for your time. I thought this was very helpful. Is there anything else? That we haven't touched upon that you'd like to make sure that we do touch upon at our next meeting?
May I bring up one point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, it, David, have you talked to the neighbors to the west and the condos and the apartments up on the hill? Because I think that would be good to have done before the public hearing.
Um I usually do try and reach out, uh and we certainly will. Uh we have not yet because this whole thing has been still in development, but we certainly will, yes.
I'm just thinking in light of the idea of that, um connecting that trail from. Down to the plaza area or down towards your development up to theirs to provide more access and more feed on the street kind of thing.
Yeah. We've had it very informal discussions with a number of people uh over the, literally over the years at this point. Uh and so I I feel fairly comfortable about where we are with with things, but you just never know. So sure, we we will be doing that.
Okay, and uh, excuse me, a word to the commissioners, uh if something does occur to you. Uh don't hesitate to um pass it on in an email or a phone call or a text uh to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Members of the commission, we appreciate your time yet again.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right, uh I think this part of the meeting, I'm going to turn over to Steve. And that's twenty twenty two dash oh nine R slash M Planning and Zoning. Zoning Regulation and MAP Amendment for Industrial Uses and Zones. This is our preliminary review. Typically, we um typically, I don't know if it'll be typical or not, but. Typically, this precedes a public hearing.
Okay, everybody can see that, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um I figured we'd start and then please interrupt at any point. I figure we'd start with the map and then work our way through some of the other documents that I shared. So this map here is a map that shows mostly the um commercial zones. And highlights where you can do, for lack of a better term, what we call industrial or heavier commercial type uses. Um and the this, the industrial zone study really focused on three areas of the city, working kind of north to south. Uh this is kind of called the Perry Avenue area up to the north of Main Ave.
Then there's East Norwalk, which has obviously the large Norton property, but then has an area of industrial zone land that parallels the train tracks on either side of East Avenue and then wraps back into WPCA. And then the largest area within the study area was really in South Norwalk, which comprises of different zones. So there are currently technically three industrial zones. The main one I would say is the largest one is industrial number one, which allows kind of the heavier uses. We also have an industrial number two zone, but there really is only this little purple guy over here, which he's kind of all by himself, is the only kind of odd little industrial number two zone. And then there's also a restricted industrial zone, which runs along an LK Drive and then over a little east of Bowton Street. So the proposed zoning, you know, breaks it down into different areas. So I'll start in a little different order than I just went through, but so on the left-hand side, you can see the existing zoning. So this darker purple is the industrial number one zone. Here's the East Avenue corridor. Here's the train station, just kind of give everybody a little bit of reference point. And what we did recently, you recall, we rezoned this corridor of East Norwalk into the new Village District Zone. And what the plan calls for is rezoning the industrial areas and then also looking at, you could, you have two options with Norton. So you can put this industrial number one zone into what's being called industrial number two now, which is a little bit more of a lighter industrial zone and a transition zone between what, you know, lighter commercial uses and residential as opposed to the heavy industrial use. And I think for for safety purposes, it probably makes sense to put the Norton site in that zone for now, because there are a lot of uses in the existing regulations under I-1 for Norton or also restricted industrial that I don't think you want to see going forward in any of those uses. So that's kind of those two, that area in a nutshell. Next area is what we, the Perry Avenue area. So right now, a lot of this area is in business number two. But if you kind of, if you get a chance, you can either take a ride or just simply use like Google Earth or Street View and look at what's there now. It's it really has a lot of industrial uses. And then you'll recall at your last meeting, we just approved a light manufacturer to go into one of these spaces. And I just got a new special permit application for 16 Muller that you'll probably see in a few weeks for, you know, there's another small manufacturing building. So this area seems to lend itself to to, you know, go in that direction anyway. So I think it makes sense to rezone it and codify it and then provide some enhancements within the existing industrial two zoning to allow some, you know, greater uses. And there's also a small, smaller area south of New Canaan Ave that's lumped into the industrial number two zone off of Main Ave.
You say greater users, Steve, what do you mean by that?
I'm sorry?
When you said great, allow for greater usage or uses, what did you mean by that?
Sure. And I'll go into that in more detail a little bit later, but the the proposed changes to the I-2 zone allow for additional height and there's justification in the plan as to why you should do that. And it allows for a broader mix of uses with the idea being that the underlying or indoor principally ground floor use and the principal use on the site has to remain commercial and or industrial, but there are some accessory uses you can do to help offset the cost of those uses and supplement the uses down below. So this is Wall Street area. You'll recall perhaps that when this area was rezoned to Central Business District in 2019, there were several little pockets of industrial zone property, which you can see in the purple here. Some of these are off Cross Street, some of these off of Main Street and a few off of Knight Street and High Street as well. And we, at the time, didn't rezone those or recommend rezoning those because we knew we were going to be undertaking this study shortly. But after looking at it with a fresh lens, the the recommendation from a consultant and also the consultant looking at the zoning regs, by the way, is to consolidate these zones and just rezone these like kind of outlier parcels as part of the central business district. And I think that will enable more unified development pattern over time. Just to point out for the record, as you can see, there is industrials one zone land along the Norwalk River. As you know, we are doing a more in-depth dive on the waterfront areas right now. So there's going to be proposed zoning that comes out of that study too, but for our purposes tonight, we're not focusing on on that aspect.
That would be neighborhood business would be reason to. I just, the pinks are very close from my eyes.
This area through here?
Yeah. Or is that mixed use? I'm just looking at the proposed use classifications here.
Right. So that's what they're calling like a mixed use artisan, which allows a different, a different types of uses and a mix of uses in promotes. Yeah, it promotes boutique manufacturing and things like that in the ground floor, but the underlying zoning would be central business district, similar to what's in in the broader area.
That's supposed to be mixed use artisan is the subcategory here.
Right.
Okay.
In South Norwalk, I have a few different maps to show just because the scale of it is a lot larger than the other areas. So this is the kind of recommended classification system with the the proposed zoning as well. So as you can see through here, probably put these slides out of order now that I look at them. I'll back up. There we go. So what this attempts to do is kind of codify in consolidate where the industrial uses are and then kind of break out what you can do within those zones. So I'll start kind of on the west side through here is kind of, here's Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard or Drive, excuse me, and over on this side, you have Bowton Street. So there are a lot of different industrial uses on this side. One of the things that came out of the study was you need to kind of provide protections and separation between where you have residential uses and where you have some of these different contractor type uses. So what the what the zoning does is over time will hopefully kind of meld that. So there are going to be some uses in here that become non-conforming. And so we understand that. But over time, we think consolidating this area to, you know, ensure that the development pattern is consistent through here will provide those protections. There are properties in this kind of block through here, which are actually a zone residential right now that we're recommending over time be rezoned to industrial two. A little further south, this area through here is actually right now is on restricted industrial. But if you go out and actually look at what's there, we're actually recommending that it goes into the industrial one zone, which is the heavier zone. And the reason is, well, why would you do that? But there's really no residential trigger here to to have that conflict. So we think it it makes sense to allow that heavier uses in this block. Wrapping around down to the south, right now, a lot of this is restricted industrial, proposing to eliminate the restricted industrial and just go with industrial two. Same thing with the east side, when you get a little to the east of Meadow Street. We understand that there are a lot of existing heavy industrial uses through this corridor through here. And a lot of those provide essential services to the city. And we think that, you know, you need to maintain that the ability to have these heavy industrial uses, but to the east of that, we've shrunk down the area that allows I-1, it has this transitional zone, which does allow for industrial uses, but gets away from the industrial type of uses, which are the ones that create the noise pollution and the air pollution that are in conflict with the residential areas to the north, south and the east. So we're trying to provide buffer while also allowing those uses to continue. And another thing which I'll get into a little bit with the zoning, the specific rezoning is that there, while you know, you're still allowing some of these uses that occur today in these industrial one zones, we we think there's incentives built into the proposed zoning where there may be alternatives that are more consistent with the neighborhood and less conflict with the neighborhood that provide incentive for property owners to change over time to something that's just, you know, maybe more beneficial for everyone. Here are a couple of close-up shots that just kind of show a little the areas more specific because when you get into, you know, Merritt Place and Olean Street, you know, there's a lot of smaller parcels. So what does this actually mean if you're on the street? So on the left side is the existing zoning. Again, the dark purple is the heavier industrial and the lighter pink in this map is existing neighborhood business. So what you can see specifically changes, if you want, you know, to get into, you know, the definite specifics. Here's here's the area that was zone, or I should say is currently zoned heavy industrial. So here's Concord Street for a reference point. What we're proposing is this becomes what's known now as the industrial number two zone. Same thing when you get in off of Merritt Street down into Chestnut. And this would would transition to the industrial two. I I think in one of the later maps, I did revert this back to neighborhood business on the east side, but I'll clarify that the next time that we speak, because when you go it out, you know, and actually just visit the sites, there are a lot of residential uses there and some lighter commercial ones. So we felt that those would probably be good from a neighborhood preservation standpoint. On the kind of a little bit further to the west, Merritt Street, again, I mentioned, has a lot of small lots and it's got a lot of eclectic mix of uses through there. We felt it's important to keep the industrial, commercial aspect of it, but reduce the heavy industrial, commercial aspect of it. That's why it's proposed to go to the industrial number two versus the industrial number one.
Excuse me, Steve, is it possible you could make that just a little bigger?
Let me see if I can.
Thank you.
And and Steve, this is JJ. I do have a question in regards to the proposed changes from industrial one to industrial two.
Yep.
I just need some clarity. So when you say industrial one, you mean, is this light business? Light industry?
Sure, I'll get into that part a little bit later. Maybe I should have started with that as opposed to the map. I thought the map would be the better place to start, but I can I'll definitely get into the what the differences are in the zones and we can flip back to the maps if 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 need be.
Right. And the reason why I'm asking is because there's already quite a bit of industrial use in this area. So I'm just wondering, is this map now going to alleviate that congestion? Or is it going to invite more to the area?
Um, that's a good question. I don't it, I think the overall amount of industrial zone land actually shrinks with the proposal. I do have those calculations. I can provide those to you next time. I I did do those for a different presentation, but the overall amount of the industrial zone land actually shrinks with this. Just and a lot of the reason is because even though there are properties that are currently zoned industrial, the majority of the uses in a certain block might be residential now. So it doesn't make sense for them to be zoned industrial, especially when they're not surrounded by industrial zone lands. And we tried to right-size that and put it in that perspective. We understand there are going to be a few spots that are non-conforming as a result of the proposed changes, but I think over time it makes sense for the for the broader neighborhood. I don't know if that addressed your question or not.
Well, I'm I'm going to wait for you to get to 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 the part of your presentation where you clarify, you know, each each type of business for these for these use. But I do want to go to the previous slide or the, I guess, two slides before that where you highlight MLK Boulevard. Thank you. And you have that large, this this is surrounded by shades of purple. And so now is this area going to be an industrial zone completely? Like, is this now exclusive industrial zone? Either one or two.
Correct. So this area, which is the lighter purple color, right now, the I would say over 80 to 90% of this area now is already in zoned either industrial one or restricted industrial. There are a few, as I mentioned, a few parcels in here that are zoned residential, but they're surrounded by, like if you go down Bowton Street on the, so if you're going down, it would be on your left, which is the east side. There's a couple sections of Bowton Street with small lots that you'll have a house or a residential building and then right next to it's a manufacturing building. And then there's a contractor yard, then there's a house again. So we felt that keeping this block consistent on the on the industrial side made sense over time. But the majority of these parcels through here, all of these have existing industrial uses on those now.
And the dark purple is the proposed?
So the dark purple is proposed industrial number one and the lighter purple is proposed industrial number two. That's shown up on the key.
Right. And so once again, I mean, your your map is is just showing a flat streetscape. However, we both know that that area is really hard to navigate. The streets are very narrow. It's not designed for trucks, is not designed for through, you know, large vehicles. How is this going to happen?
Right. So that that's actually a good point because Bowton Street right now, the majority of the east side of Bowton, which I'm kind of going through quickly over here, isn't is zoned industrial one. The consultants, one of their first thoughts and recommendations was Bowton Street is too narrow for those heavy trucks. So they recommended downzoning it, which is why it proposed to go from the industrial number one to the industrial number two.
Okay. All right. All right. And and so MLK Boulevard, you know, where it leads into Wilson Avenue is basically going to be the designated through, I mean, you know, through through way for these trucks.
Right. And that's really how it functions now, and I think was meant to function.
But no, it doesn't function that way now. I I get to what you're saying. It was meant to be that way, but that's not how it is now.
How do you mean?
A lot of these trucks, they they take shortcuts through these neighborhoods.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Right. Yeah. And we did talk about that, too. There it was, we had talked about the potential opportunity to get trucks out of the neighborhoods more directly onto that, but it was really the road network was disjointed, especially when you get through here. It doesn't, they don't line up. There wasn't a good like direct east-west connection to get them there.
Okay, so I guess I'll address this issue as further into your presentation. I don't want to throw you off.
No, it's okay. No, no problem. Okay. So I think I touched on most of what's through here. So this is just kind of a a larger map that shows the broader area again. And I'm sorry, the colors are different, but it was just the the way the map was laid out. And this just shows the proposed rezoning. I didn't touch on, there was a couple of areas through here that actually have, this is off of Lexington Ave, that if you drive that, there really is no commercial property on there. It's almost all residential. So right now, there there it's a mix of industrial zone and or neighborhood business zone. So we're proposing just to rezone it to all residential, which just lines up with all the uses of the properties that are there now. So I think that makes makes sense to do over time. And I think that's the only big change that we didn't talk about. Okay. So this this addresses some of what we were just talking about, and I'll bring up the other specific documents a little bit, but I think this talks a little bit about some of the things that are allowed in the different zones. And in the future, how they'll be permitted, if they'll be permitted in that. So one thing that the regulations existing regulations don't do is provide good definitions or provide definitions for all the uses that are there now. So we've broken out and I'll get into these in a little more detail a little later is defining what a, like an earth processing kind of contractor yard is for somebody who has like three plumbing trucks and what the different kind of impacts they have on a neighborhood and in the properties. So what the regulations say, okay, if you're going to have these, you know, earth processing contractor material storage yard, and you're going to be sorting dirt and you're going to have stockpiles and you know, creating dust and noise, that's only allowed in the industrial number one zone. And based on the size of and scale of your operation, it can either be permitted by what's called a site plan application. it can either be permitted by what's called a site plan application or by a special permit application. Both of those have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the special permit applications have some additional, um, and more stringent criteria that can get applied to them. The next category, which is a little bit of a lighter category, would be that, um, that plumber that we're talking about that has three or four trucks and maybe he's got, um, some outdoor racks of piping or something, but he doesn't have piles of dirt and or process material that he might use. That's allowed, um, in both the I one zone and in the I two zone. And depending on the scale and the scope, could it either be a site plan approval or a special permit? The next category would be somebody that has like an indoor contractor facility. So all the trucks and everything he does is contained indoors. He doesn't do anything on the outside. So that can be allowed, um, also in the uh, business one or the business two zones. And if you think about the business one in business two zones, those are basically the Route One corridor or also along Main Ave. So if you wanted to do that, you can do it, but it's got to be indoors. Um, another definition that we already have, but we've kind of clarified a little bit is boutique manufacturing. And if you think about boutique manufacturing, that could be somebody that's, um, a bakery, for example, or it's, could be somebody that's making a brewery that has that component to it. And that could be something that's allowed by zoning permit in a myriad of different zones. Heavy manufacturing and a good example in town would be King Industries. That's only allowed in the industrial's number one zone, and that's a special permit application. Light manufacturing, which we've defined, um, and has parameters wrapped around it. It's a special permit use, but you can do that. Not sure where my screen share went. Sorry about that. Uh, screen share for a second. Okay. Um, I'll leave it in this view. So if you are doing, uh, light manufacturing, you can do that in those zones, but that would be by special permit. Um, another topic that came up, if you remember from the Norton application was this, uh, the, the distribution facility. And there were all kinds of concerns related to distribution facilities based on the traffic they create and all the delivery trucks coming in and out. Plus the large trucks that were delivering, um, you know, whatever you were distributing from that facility. So that's only allowed in the industrial number one zone. And that is by a, um, a special permit application. The other one that came up kind of later part of the study was self-storage. So we proposed to allow self-storage by special permit only, um, in the business one and business two zones. And as we'll get into in a little bit is that, you know, there are several caveats and parameters about when and if you can do that, um, self-storage facility. So give me a second and I will pull up some of the other documents related to this. Perhaps it might make sense to start with the definitions and then get into the um, specific zones as well. And then we can go through the, the schedule. Okay. Do you need me to make that a little larger?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So in the existing regulations, we, we're proposing to delete some terms. Cause we redefine them and there were a couple kind of redundant terms. So there, there's a few, a few proposed deletions and then more on the side of new terms. So we clearly define things. Um, and, and as you'll see at, at some point when we get into when the new zoning regulations are out, there are a lot more definitions. So everything's defined, which has always been a big problem with our current regulations because it was based off interpretation verse off of a defined term. Uh, so the first definition is a, um, commercial vehicle storage yard. And so basically what that is, is somebody who's just storing stuff. And then that's a little bit different from the third definition you'll see there, which is the earth processing and contractor material storage yard where in the earth processing yard, you can have the equipment there. Um, but you're also storing materials and you're sifting dirt and you're doing all the things that, you know, have led to historic issues in, in, it's particularly in South Norwalk when, you know, you have a, a pile, it's twenty-five, thirty feet high and they don't have the, um, you know, sprinklers running and there, there's dust generated from that. And, you know, they're tracking the material off the site that's getting in the road. So we're, we're trying to define where those areas can go and, um, kind of put some caps and caveats on, on what they can do on the site. We provided a definition of a distribution facility because right now we currently don't have one. It was kind of lumped in with the storage definition. I deleted the, proposed to delete the definition of the, um, you know, contractor office and then just kind of clarify that. With the newer definition of an indoor contractor facility. So that way it's a little more clear on, on what you can do. We, I, for, just for everybody's benefit, we included the existing definitions of boutique, light and heavy manufacturing. So that way you already kind of is, you know, if you're thinking about these at the same time, they're there. Uh, provided the definition from the self-storage facility, which was lacking from the current regulations. Sorry, jumped a little bit. And this is just kind of a future reference be, as we get into like the, the changes to the allowed heights in the zones. Provide a definition of, of a transitional height plane, which is a way to limit the impact of a larger building when it butts up to a smaller scale residential development. And this is kind of the working definition because I've seen a couple of different examples on how you measure and calculate that. And so I'm still trying to come up with the, you know, the best one for, for Norwalk. We, and it kind of oddly enough, our regulations really don't define what a commercial vehicle is. So we've come up with a definition of a commercial vehicle, which I think is a good thing, um, for particularly from an enforcement standpoint. So that way there's a term there when we're talking about a commercial vehicle. Um, and that's the extent of the definition changes. I can go on to the next phase if you'd like, or if there's questions specific to any of the definitions.
I have a question on the definition, Steve. Where would something like vertical farming fall into place, like a vertical farming facility?
Yeah. So that would fall under one of the manufacturing definitions, and I think it would depend on the scale.
Okay.
And we allow that now. So I think we, we would lump, just put it into one of the existing definitions.
Gotcha. Okay, cool.
Okay. Just give me a sec while I pull the next one up. So I'll start with the industrial number one zone, because that's kind of the the one that usually generates the most conversation. Okay. Is that text, uh, large enough for everybody?
Yeah, I can read it.
So just going through these, and I, I don't intend to read these word for word. As you can see on this page, there are a few areas that are yellow highlighted because I was, that's just my initial recommendation for purposes of discussion. And then um, we can further vet these and, and discuss them and see, if people think those numbers are appropriate or should we adjust those? But, uh, and, and also for reference, the red text is proposed text, whereas the not, if it's not red, it's, um, existing text. And please, um, you know, stop me at any point with any questions. A couple of things that we talked about, just so while you see, um, on E where it gets into manufacturing. Um, there are some new numbers through here, three through five. And what this does is try to, um, you know, because the, the manufacturing process is changing. We're not seeing like a typical straight-on manufacturing. There's all these kind of hybrid uses where they all have like, they seem to have a retail component to them as well as a storage component. Um, and they do a lot of different things. So it's not just one thing. So we, we're trying to keep the intent of the, the zone and the regulations consistent while understanding and recognizing that some of these practices occur in the building, but the predominant use should be that manufacturing. Um, so if it goes, you know, if you had somebody that had, um, seventy percent of the space was, uh, more looked more like a distribution facility, then we could say, wait a minute, we don't think you fit under this category. And how does that work in terms of your traffic and your parking? So that, that's kind of why we put those caveats and, and covenants around each one of those uses.
Steve?
Yep.
If I may, um, you know, we keep hearing about the artisan bakery and the brewery and I, I think, you know, Norwalk has probably already have enough of those, but to give the commissioners an idea, like the, the gentleman that came uh, with his computer parts business, for lack of a better term. Where, where would he fit into this? Because technology is clearly going, is here to stay and hopefully Norwalk could attract more businesses like his. And where would that fit in?
Yeah. So he could probably fit in under, um, one of the manufacturing categories, more than likely under some kind of the light category. Um, as opposed to definitely not a heavy manufacturer, just be based on, you know, if that definition had caveats about, uh, noise generated, um, you know, dust and did you have to handle all those kind of like, um, irritants to the, the neighborhood? So he wouldn't fit under that. So he would be more under light manufacturing. And that would be something that I think when we redo the zoning and then also consider this, a- as we talked about, ideally that kind of application, if there weren't significant traffic implications, would probably be something they could just get a permit for. But I, I mean, that all, like, I have some of these yellow placeholders here for discussion. What, what's the threshold level that you're comfort, comfortable with? Where it can just be an over the counter permit verse something that the, the commission should take a look at prior to, uh, approval.
Right. And I think the distinction there that is important is how many, uh, truck trips does that, does something like that generate where he kind of has stuff going in and out every day? But if somebody's truly a manufacturing, maybe they don't have so much.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is it's, he mainly does distribution.
Right. But so, so does distribution weigh, is there a different weight for distribution if you're light industry versus, uh, light or light manufacturing versus another one?
Yeah. So we can, we can add, um, caveats in about the, you know, the, the proposed or anticipated, trip generation that results from that. And I think, I thought he had a pretty low volume of, uh, vehicle trips that they indicated that they, you know, typically occurs in, in their operations.
I would agree. I didn't have any problem with what he was trying to accomplish. I think it's great. And I think it would be great if Norwalk could have more businesses like that.
Right. And I, I think one of the things we're trying to do is make this simpler for, for folks, you know, and, and not have to come to the commission necessarily for a special permit, just because you're doing something that was once classified, uh, uh, under a different definition.
Right. That was my next question, because what happens when a company starts to expand or starts to evolve into something else from a, from a one to a two?
So, so I, I, this is probably a crude example, I guess, but if you were considered like a light manufacturer, like, like the gentleman talked about, but then he, he came up with a different business model where they were going to start doing, uh, you know, using chemicals on the site and making different things, uh, that might change the classification of what we consider him, or at least consider the new portion of the business. So that could kick him into a different definitional category where then that might have to come back to the commission for a special permit.
Right. And so is there a caveat going to be built in? Where if that does happen, it goes under further review and possible, you know, um, violation enforcements?
I, I, I think that's already built into the, the system, the land use system now. So under that example I just gave, which is like, like I said, it's a pretty crude example. I- if they, you know, came in, say, we're, we're going to put a twenty thousand square foot expansion on our building, um, and inside that building, we're going to be doing X, Y, and Z. And we're, and staff looks and says, well, wait a minute, that's your, you know, your existing permit and your allowed use only permits you to do light manufacturing. We classify this as heavy manufacturing. You know, we would, we'd look at the regulations and say, well, A, you can't do that at this location, or B, um, this has to go to the commission for approval. So that, that happens right now on, you know, any permit application that comes in.
Right. I'm just, I'm just, um, leaning back into, um, what happened, you know, on my street. There was, there was a, a company that had containers that initially they were a small storage and suddenly they expanded and there was containers everywhere. And at no point what was that stopped, was reclassified and at no point was it enforced? And it became a community fight to get them to stop.
Right.
That leads into my, my question as what happens when a company is, you know, okay, well, I'm, 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 I'm one, I'm classified as one, but over the years, the demand of their business causes them to expand and causes them to, to build up and evolve into something else. Where now they're taking up more space. Now they have more trucks on, on the site. Now they have more containers on the site. Now there's more traffic on the site. What happens with that?
So if they make, so any application you approve, so it, it comes in for a site plan application. There's, there's an actual plan that shows the proposed development on the parcel. So they show, um, you know, th- this area is designated for parking. This area is designated for storage of materials. This is a landscaped area. That's the approved plan that goes along with the commission's approval. So if they vary that, um, technically that could go back to the commission for review. So if they said, we're going to eliminate ten parking spaces and then we're going to start storing, um, uh, whatever material is in this area, that we would say, wait a minute, that's not allowed. A, you're in violation, or B, you, you can't do it unless you go to the commission for approval. So that, that's kind of a common thing that we deal with now.
So the classifications of these zones, industrial site one and industrial zone two will be strictly enforced.
I, I, I think so. I hope so. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Steve, do we? So in fact, we're still in I one. So, um, just a couple changes through here, nothing significant, but, um, there are some special permit uses in here. And one of the ones that, and you'll see is a, is a hot topic of discussion like i- is D under, three D under special permits. Um, and I had just, that's why I have the yellow there is kind of a question mark. So if you're going to be doing the, um, earth processing yard and you're proposed to be over, um, twenty thousand square feet of lot area, which is basically half an area, um, does this require a special permit? Where are you comfortable seeing the special permit trigger? Um, those are just a couple of questions that I had there.
And can you explain the impetus beyond, uh, for that?
Well, I mean, the, the larger, the, um, the larger the yard, the greater the impacts. Um, I mean, I think that's probably the simplest way of looking at it. If it's under, um, you know, under twenty thousand square feet, you know, half an acre is not a, a big lot. So, um, just the, the, um, the scope or the impacts that they may pose as a result of their activity is going to be less than what could happen on a larger site. So I think that's really the only real impetus for it.
And, and do you have a ballpark recommendation? Do you have a ball, happen to have a ballpark recommendation? Uh, you know, do we allow a larger lots by special permit? So like a recommendation or like a trick?
Yeah, that, that's where, that's my, my twenty thousand is my ballpark, um, at the moment. Um, like I said, we're, you know, this is kind of the first night of the discussion of this. I figure we're going to probably do this at least one more time. So I'm happy to kind of further clarify our recommendation. And then if you want examples of lots that are perhaps about that size and what they are now, I can probably just use our GIS and say, here's a contractor yard on whatever street and here's the lot size. So you can get a sense of, of the scope and you can say, well, that, that makes sense on these kinds of sites, but if I give you another one, well, this is way too big and this would, this would need a special permit. So I can do that if that's helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, Steve. That's a great idea. And then also where we do have existing contractor yards are most of them in B or C or D zones where the minimum lot is, you know, less than a tenth of an acre.
Well, the, the majority of the legal, of an, an Well, the, the majority of the legal, and I'm, I'm, when I'm saying contractor yards, I'm, I'm thinking more in line of the, like the heavier contractor yards where there's, you know, a lot of truck activity and a lot of materials being stored.
Give us, can you give us some examples as you go along, as you're thinking about who those are? Like obviously LaJoy's is not on a small half acre lot. That's massive. But what about, I don't know, somewhere else that maybe everybody would know? If you could give us an example?
There is a smaller one, and I don't know how active they are at the moment, but I, I, and I hate to say this because it's near the brewery. So that's usually one thing that always comes to my mind. There's one on Chestnut, on the east side of Chestnut, there's a smaller yard there. And that might be about a half an acre, but I can, I can double check that tomorrow. That's got some tarps over materials piles. Some of the, you know, some of the contractor yards that do the earth processing along Meadow Street, some of those are kind of internal to the property or their rear parcels. So it's harder to see those operations from the street. I'm trying to think of the size of the ones on Bowden Street because there's a bunch of parcels there. There are, some of the lots are larger, but there's a lot of continuously owned smaller parcels too. So they're, that's a little bit deceptive for, from that vantage point.
Well, if in our next discussion, if you can either give us a list of places that we can peruse by and have a look ourselves, or if you can bring the Google Maps and, and show us, because I think when we're trying to make these distinctions, it's kind of, when you're just looking at a piece of paper, 20,000 square feet doesn't really mean much. Just like, you know, how big is a 50,000 square foot building? We need something, a, a reference point.
Sure. That, that's easy.
Everybody knows how big Stu Leonard's is, for example, then we can kind of go from there, you know?
Yep. No, it's easy. That's easy.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add something on to that. What Tammy just asked for, which is that is the AMAC waste transfer. You know, the recycling with, it's a waste transfer station behind stepping stones. That one's easy to see. And I'm just curious what that lot size is. So that we can see what's possible on the, on that size. Cause that's kind of shoehorned in there, but it's, it's very active.
Right. And even how tall that is, is that a three story structure or two, you know, that, that would be great. It's a good example.
Yeah, I, I, I might have to guesstimate on the height, but the other parts I can do pretty easily.
You're a professional, Steve. You can guesstimate.
Professional guesstimator, yes.
Question for you. Is there a world where we'd want to make some green infrastructure project elements required as a right here for these industrial things? Is all these industrial zones? I know there's not an incentive structure. I don't think we can do something like incentives, but.
Can you, I'm, I'm not quite clear what you're asking.
I don't know. Yeah, I would say even more like a lot of these like indoor facilities, like solar's got to be on the roof or something like that, or more like, you know, more trees on the property as a result of, to, you know, offset the general use. I don't know. I just think there's obviously we don't want to say no to these, these, or these companies, but it seems like a point in time to see if we want to push the envelope there. Or find others feel that way.
Yeah, that, those are things we can look at. I mean, the solar one's a little different than the, you know, the, the site. Site specific issues like the trees and the vegetative buffers and the landscaping, those, those are easier criteria to build into the requirements. The, the solar one I'm still wrestling with and trying to get a better answer for that citywide, not just industrial zones. But yeah, I think that's fair. A couple of ones, if you look on this page under letter F and letter G, and that G I had, F and G are holdovers from the existing regulations. So, you know, I, I don't know if that's why I highlighted, we want to, this is a propane gas storage facility, something that's appropriate or not appropriate. I mean, I don't know if that was written specifically for maybe King Industries at one point in time. I don't know of another one in South Norwalk that's got something like that. And is that something we want to see going forward? I just, that's why I got it highlighted yellow.
Is that what, HOKON, do they store they have propane storage tanks there off of MLK?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I don't know.
This is, this is another one where I, I, I think we know, need to know what scale looks like. You know, what is 30,000 gallons of natural gas? What, you know, is it the equivalent, say, of what Stu Leonard has that he sells, the tank that he sells from?
I'll try to do some research on that. I'm going to guess that Stu Leonard's tank is not that big, but I can.
Well, like just to say, most people that have a residential home heating oil tank in their basement, it's about 250 gallons. So go from there. Multiply that times 15.
And, and I just have a quick question regarding this, the storage tanks, the environmental impact report. You're talking about a typical transaction screen, Steve? Were you talking about a phase one? Are you looking to do like ongoing reporting system or? Comes to these companies, they, they could be gouged by having, you know, the regulatory DEP monitor them.
No, it's not that. And I, and we don't, I don't think we have the authority to, you know, require something like that. Basically what is given now, and, and it's only on specific uses where it's required, is kind of indicating how they're going to handle their, you know, like a good example, where we had some more detail was there was a rock crushing facility approved, indoor rock crushing facility approved. Um, I think it was off of Meadow Street a few years ago and the big, one of the big concern was how are you going to handle your, the dust that's generated from that? And so they had to provide us with a lot of detail on the type of HVAC system that they were installing. And, you know, indicate how it handled all the particular matter. Uh, and I think it's more along the lines of how they handle their all the issues generated on their site in terms of, you know, or do you need an oil water separator? Are you creating dust? Noise, light pollution could technically fall under that category as well. So I think it's more generic. It's not, not the same as a phase one or a phase two site investigation.
We, we do, on that note, good questions, Steve Ferguson and good answer, Steve Kleppen. But we do have a, a prototype. It may not apply to everything, but it's for the aquifer protection area of a environmental impact requirement. And that may be already prescribed by the state. I'm not sure, but that, but that lists everything there. We're going to handle how, you know, how it's disposed, schedules, et cetera. If, if that would be, if we could transfer that over and apply that framework to this, that would just, you know, be easy, but I'm, I'm not sure what the parameters are of that already required environmental impact report for, for that. You know, we require those for that area you were talking about earlier, around Perry Avenue is a aquifer protection area, but you know, for example.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll, I'll chat with Alexis about that. And then, I mean, there may be some of it that's not applicable, but I'll take a look and I, I'm happy to forward that around as well. That's a good idea.
I may, sorry for getting slightly off the track, but talking about solid waste and transfer stations, you know how the city is doing this test project with compost and they take it to an anaerobic digester up in Southington? Do we have some, would, would our regulations allow for something like that in Norwalk?
That, that type of facility, I would, I would just need to understand a little bit more what it actually does, but I would think it would fall under something. Yeah, it's tough when I'm screen sharing to go back and forth and look at the definitions of heavy manufacturer, heavy industrial. This is quite possible.
Basically it takes, and I'm sure you know what it does, but in layman's terms, you know, it takes food waste and then converts it either back into heat or some of them just convert back into like mulch and fertilizer. Mike Newshack can probably do a much more eloquent description than I, but anyway, that's the general idea. And I think
You're right. You're good enough.
And it's not a, it wouldn't be a transfer station with trash. It's just for food waste. Anyway, just a thought, could be a good.
Yeah, my guess is probably would be allowed, but I'd, I'd have to go just re, re, read the definitions again one more time.
Okay, thanks.
And I think the only significant other thing I was going to mention on here is J, which is a special permit category as well. So the, we'll get into this a little bit. And if you haven't had a chance to read the industrial zones report draft, I would recommend looking at that again, but it does recommend increasing the allowed height. And the rationale behind that is that the type of manufacturing uses that are, you know, successful today, require a higher ground floor area. So the first floor often needs to be well in excess of 20 feet in height to handle the equipment that's brought in and then, you know, the truck access in and out of that particular part of the facility. So that does drive up the height in certain, certain circumstances. So that's why they're recommending some increased height. But, you know, we understand that there's always concerns related to that. So that's why we put in, if you, if you're going to exceed that height of 65 feet, that's going to go for a special permit. And then I think this was just a section in the regulations that I think is kind of superfluous based on the non-conforming use, but I was going to bounce that off the law department just to get their sense, but that was that. I had the definition and the last one on here is E. We went through the transitional grade plane. So that is, you know, in the section about the requirements, and this would be the area where if you wanted to beef up things like the landscaping, this would be the area that was in there. Cause right now it's, it does require the landscaping and native trees and shrubs. But if you wanted to beef that up at all, this would be the section to include that in. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what we do have? Yeah. And here is the section on the environmental impact report. I think we did beef this up a little bit from what was existing as well.
But Steve, the existing businesses that won't have to do any of this review. It's only somebody coming in new, applying for the first time, right?
Correct. And it's a one time, unless, you know, they changed their operations and had to come back to the commission. It's, they don't have to give us an annual compliance report or anything like that.
I have a question, Steve.
Sure.
I should know this, but just to refresh my memory, and I guess for the rest of the commission who's as dumb as me, maybe, but I, what are the setback requirements currently in the industrial zones? You know, just like it would be for front yard, side yard, et cetera. Are those established?
There are existing setbacks, yes.
And if so, are, are we changing those in any way besides the, the, the angle that you described? I mean, is there any other? Is, is that what you're saying? We could beef those up if we wanted to?
Yes. And I, you, you're, you're one screen share ahead of me, but I'll jump to that now, just to.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, you're, it's all good. Let me just blow this up a little bit.
Newshack, they, in the packet of stuff that went out in the email, there is the schedule of limiting height and bulk of buildings, et cetera. Um, it's hard to read on the screen, but yeah. And you need a magnifying glass to read. Anyway, it's there.
Thanks. All right.
Right. So here is the let me scroll up. Okay. And I'll go zone by zone is probably easier. So, sorry. Got too many zones on here. All right. So the existing industrials, number one zone. Um, here are the criteria. So the, for the, and I'll start just with height. So the base height, four stories, 50 feet. There is an allowance that was probably put in a long time ago for some project. That you can go up to six stories and 72 feet, the study recommendation that changed the as of right to four stories, 65 feet. Um, and then up to 85 feet by special permit. And then if you do that, they, the minimum ground floor height has to be 40 feet. And that goes talking about the additional requirements for, uh, what, you know, what, what they're typically seeing for the ground floor manufacturing use at this point. No change to the minimum lot size or lot width. We just clarified the setback again, 35 feet from the center line of the street. The, so the side and the rear yard, the side proposed is 10 feet. And there is something in the existing regulations that when it talks about 10 feet or for a story or 20 feet, which is ever greater when you're near a mixed use or residential development. Consultants are recommending a little more consistent and a better approach, which actually they feel will better protect those residential uses, which is to apply that transitional grade plane calculation to those sites. So that will be built into the regulations. And basically what that does in a nutshell is if you're kind of standing on that property that, that a butt spores across the street from that new industrial building, that you have to provide that calculation from that view shed. So it shows that whatever is being proposed, which obviously is going to be a, a, a larger building than where you're at, you're not getting that loom impact because of the way the building is constructed and the upper stories are set back in, in, in particular patterns to eliminate, eliminate that loom. Same thing in the rear yard as well. So there's a 10 foot minimum. And then, but it's also subject to that transitional grade plane. No change in terms of the amount of the, you know, the way the building coverage is looked at in terms of parking and building. You know, right now, they, they did recommend reducing our parking requirements for the manufacturing uses based on, you know, best practices. And that's taken into account as part of the parking proposal. That's it for the changes for the I one. The industrial number two, and I didn't base that really off the existing industrial number two, since there's, as we looked at the maps at the beginning, there's really only that one tiny little tran- triangular piece of property. So that, that really didn't factor into kind of the reasoning behind things. So the industrial number two, if you remember, is a little bit, the kind of the lighter version. The industrial number one is heavier, allows more intense uses. Where the industrial number two is kind of that transitional use between the heavy industrial and then you get into more either commercial zones and or potentially residential zones. So the maximum height proposed in the industrial number two is four stories, 65 feet with a minimum ground floor height of 30 feet. So it's, it is less than the industrial number one. And that's, you know, to provide that transition from taller, heavier down to lower and less intense as you move towards the residential areas. Consistent with the setbacks from the street. I think with all zones, where the, you'll see the first significant change besides the height is that the industrial number two zone does allow for residential uses on upper floors of the buildings. We've proposed the residential use to be at a density of one unit per every 1,650 square feet of lot area. And along with that, there is proposed to be a recreational requirement, which is consistent with all the, like the multifamily zones. The idea by allowing this residential use is the principal use and the primary intent in use of those zoning districts is the industrial or the commercial use, but we understand that sometimes those uses are difficult to finance. So we're allowing other uses on these upper floors such as residential to supplement the ground floor use and hopefully make the, you know, any project that's built there more financially viable. Right now, the
Is, isn't that also a way to get more affordable housing? If you allow it on the second floor of other commercial uses?
Yes, they, they would be still subject to our workforce housing requirements as well. So they, they would be additional affordable units built as part of that.
Well, I mean, wouldn't most of them be affordable units, period? You know, like it's much less attractive to live over a well, like they used to require second floors of a grocery stores, et cetera. You know, so they'd be, there'd be apartments over commercial uses. Is this the same kind of idea?
Um, you know, potentially, I think that's definitely a market question. I, you know, I can pose that question back to the consultant team and just Question, I, you know, I can pose that question back to the consultant team and just based on where they've, um. Realized this before, what are the market rents for, uh, uh, you know, a new residential development or new residential units? Built on top of a manufacturing facility verse, um, something that's just in a more. Um, you know, what you might see in South Norwalk up by the train station. Um, that, that, it's a good question. I don't know if I have a specific answer. The market may dictate that regardless.
Well, didn't this, I'm sorry, didn't this come up in the, uh. East Norwalk Village District, and it was the considered, uh, uh, a live-work. Situation to help manufacturers and small, small, uh, like contractors monetize their properties. By allowing them to improve their properties by, you know, building residences above, whether they live them or in them or not. But allow them to increase the, the value of their property and then have the option of living there. Right above their business, it, I mean, that, wasn't that part of that East Norwalk? Uh, discussion in the industrial zone? We didn't get there yet, but that was considered, right, we didn't approve that yet, but I think that was part of the. Process to get there, right?
And same within the, the actual TOD zone itself, same, same rationale.
So it, it's to, to, to answer Galen's question, yes, it, it would. It would make more affordable housing for someone who owns a property right now and can't build a residence on top. They could build a residence on top, it would be, I guess, de facto affordable for them, because they already own the property. You know, like it. It's, it's kind of semantics, but I mean, it, it is a way of. Be, of someone, allowing someone to live where they work.
Right, but you have, you can't say, let somebody say, well, I'm just gonna put residential in the industrial zone. It has to have an industrial use, because otherwise then people would. Developers would just come in and build residential housing in industrial zones.
Uh, right, yeah.
Okay, I think there's one more. Document to go through. Did we go through the I two? I can't remember now.
Most of the way there.
Okay, and the last one was the, um, and it's the shorter one of, of the group would be. The, um, changes to the business one in the business two zones, just because. There are some manufacturing uses that are allowed in there now. So we wanted to clarify that as well as some commercial uses, so I'll walk you through those and then, um, we could circle back. To any questions that you have about anything we covered. Nope, sorry, hold on a sec. Hold up the wrong one. I'm always a victim of, um, too many windows open.
Same here.
There we go, got it. Okay, now we're good. So this off the bat. Allows, and it's recommendation within the plan, allows for that kind of boutique manufacturing to occur throughout the, the business one and two zone. The same kind of draft caveats are built into. The boutique manufacturing are, as are under consideration for. The heavier manufacturing with the intent being that, that, you know, you, you're, you're a manufacturing facility. Um, first and foremost, and then there are ancillary, um, uses that occur as part of that, whether it's a retail showroom. You know, maybe there's a warehouse and storage, there's office that's in there, all, all those things occur, but. We want to make sure that the principal use is that manufacturing. Um, we're proposing also to allow light manufacturing. In the, uh, business one, business two zone. By special permit, so that's something a little bit new and a little bit different than what the existing regulations is. Um, but it's not the heavy manufacturing where you're, you're, you're concerned about those. The odors, the fumes, um, the heavy noise, the big truck traffic that would, might be generated by some of those. But this is kind of allowing, um. You know, allowing that different use in there. And also allows with by special permit, the indoor contractor facility, which is, you know, just to reiterate. As indicated in point one, no outside storage of commercial vehicles, maintenance repairs or doing anything on the outside, everything happens on the inside of the building. And this was another one that I was hoping to get a little, um. Feedback on was the self-storage facility. I think if you, the most recent self-storage project was the one built on Willard Avenue. And that had some caveats about the size of the lot, and that one said, okay, you wanna do a self-storage facility, it's gotta be on a seven-acre site. You can't be more than, um. Two hundred and fifty feet from the street with the building. Storage building can't go over a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. And, and a last caveat was one that was really specific to that project, so that's why, um. I left it in, but it's something that could probably come out or just be modified if you wanted to have an increased green space. You know, on the site versus having a conservation easement on the, the property. But I think that's kind of the caveat, I think. Self-storage, you know, it's, oh, I think it's okay as long as it's kind of not seen. So if it's something that's on one of these really large sites. Um, and it's kind of a back and ancillary and not front and center, it, it seems to not, um. Detract from, you know, the streetscape or not to become a dead use, because it's not really good job generating use. Um, and, and if you want us to do some more research on seven-acre parcels, or if you feel seven acres isn't appropriate, we can. Certainly, um, dig up those kind of things as well. Any questions about that part?
I like the easement angle, but I like the one we did on Willard as well.
Can you repeat that, please?
I was saying, I like the easement angle. Point four.
Yeah, I think the easement angle works on, it worked on Willard Road, I, I don't know if that would work everywhere, so I'd be. I'd maybe like to soften that language up a little bit to give us a little more wiggle room.
Soften it up if that's a, a, a industry you wanna promote, right? You could also see this as a way of. You know, limiting it as well in the way that you said, and also way we've sort of thought about self-storage in the past.
Yeah, that, that's definitely another angle, and then you could, um. You know, you could still require that a large portion of the site be open, but maybe not necess- because a conservation easement comes with strings sometimes. That's all, that's the only real difference.
I, I do remember someone. Explaining that the, uh, storage. Self-storage units are very low taxpaying uses because we can't tax any. Not that I'm in favor of taxing anything, I'm just saying, we don't tax like office equipment or manufacturing equipment. Or any of those things that are business property that is taxed normally in, let's say, an office building. Uh, that is a, it's the same thing with big box stores. You know, you're taxing on the square footage, but there's really nothing you're taxing inside of it, uh, because it's all consumer goods. And so there's, uh, there's better uses, uh. In, in the big picture of, you know, our limited real estate than self-storage. I don't even get self-storage, but that's just me, uh. To pay to have your junk stored off-site is just the dumbest thing I've ever heard, but anyway.
And the last little piece is just the change, recommended change to the parking, which is right from the plant.
What is the, uh, what is TU? I'm gonna get the initials wrong, but TU, PC, XYZ. Our big rewrite consultants think about this.
Uh, which, which aspect?
Like doing this now while the other thing's in flight, and then assuming they, have they read this and have sort of blessed this, or are they sort of waiting? To do that?
No, they, they, they've seen the draft and they're, you know, we're, um. You know, we, we talked about lining up the, um, zoning boundaries, um. Consistent with what's proposed in, in this plan. Um, they had a couple other thoughts about, um, maybe some other ways to deal with like the screening and of, of, like when you have the contractor yard. So we'll, we'll look at that and wrap that in. That, something to keep in mind is we do have the moratorium on, um, certain uses that expires sometime in May, so the, that was kind of the idea of. What we propose would, would slide right into the, the new regulations as well.
Are there any industries that you, that the city wants to promote that somehow. Adjusting the definitions or categories would help promote those companies coming to Norwalk?
Um, I don't think there's anything in the proposed definitions that would. Preclude somebody from coming in.
What about incite or incentivize picking Norwalk over? Fill in the blank.
Well, I, I, I think when we differentiate between uses that are, um. Well, two angles, I think, three angles, I guess. Um, one, if we differentiate uses that, um. Are considered noxious to the neighbors and, um. Define those so we know what they are versus something that's not. And, and how that translates into the code is we've opened up. The, where those, you know, what we see as uses that aren't conflicting or causing, um. Detriment to the neighbors and hopefully on the long run are job generating businesses, which helps everybody. We're, we're allowing them in, in broader areas, and then we're, we're loosening up the, um. The bulk and height standards to provide for the kind of buildings that are more conducive to that type of development. And that the last piece is lowering the parking demand so that it, it's less of a burden, because. If you look in the, the draft plan at the fit models that are in the back of the appendices, you'll see just how much of the site. Is taken up by parking, which we're gonna talk about a little bit later, anywhere, just because. The parking demand is such a, a land eater and such an expense to do that. If we loosen up those restrictions somewhat, we can make it easier for businesses to come in.
Okay, that's helpful. No, I was just thinking like, Luke, you know, through all the conversations of the past, here you've talked about, you know, getting the right sort of. Manufacturers to come into town, um, and if there was anything more we can do to sort of, you know. Push or help those guys or just incentivize those sort of manufacturing into, into town versus, versus not.
Yeah, and then there's the economic development aspect of it, where we need to, um, you know, doing the promoting, here's Norwalk, here's what we got. In the recruiting aspect, but that's, I don't know if we, we necessarily address that as part of our work here.
Doctor, that makes sense.
Thanks, Steve. And, and there are enterprise zones in town that, you know, would have tax breaks. I think that would be. You should be looked at, of course, that's a great question, you know, in this context, uh. Yes, uh, I have one question though, do, are you finished, Nick? I didn't mean to interject, okay, um. Was there anybody else waiting in line? I couldn't see any hands. Alright, uh, uh, Steve, is the indoor, uh, contractor parking facility. Uh, by as of right in business one and two or special permit? Do you recall? Because it's as of right now. And I, I just wanna make sure it stays as of right.
Let me just go up.
One of, and I bring this up because I was involved about ten years ago in establishing that use. It was, you know, it was not, never defined, and the first one that went in was Serve Pro into the brand, old Brandman's. Paint decorating, if people remember that, over on Main Street or Main Avenue, and, um. And one of the big debates was contract, small, that was to encourage small contractors. That obviously have a real hard time in Norwalk plumbers, electricians. The, the, those, Serve Pro is not a great example of that, but I mean, into the smaller spaces. Certainly all the contractors that have vans that are parking on the street to be able to rent these spaces, uh, you know, the back of shopping centers, et cetera. But if we had to require a special permit. The cost involved of a special permit, when you look at the lawyers, the surveyor, you need an A two survey. It adds up to tens of thousands of dollars. It could be fifty thousand dollars by the time all said and done, just to, just to have your, a little electrician business. Or your roofing business in the, in a small space, so I, that debate happened and we made, and it was a struggle, but we made it. And as of right in business one and two, and I just kind of wanna, uh. Confirm that, that's all, that it's not a special.
It's proposed a special permit, I have to look at the existing regulations to see. What's required, because I know Serve Pro had to go to the commission, I remember that, I just don't remember if it was a special permit. Or it was, um, site plan approved.
Yeah, alright, uh, yeah, cuz I'm, I'm looking at the code right now. This was tw- I have the twenty sixteen version, but it does show as of right in business one and two. Unless I'm reading it wrong, but, uh. Uh, yeah, print, it's a principles, it's listed as an indoor contractor parking, so it is a principal use in business one and business two. And not as a special permit. I would push, I, my statement here then would be to push to keep it as of right because of the. Print, the costs involved, and, and, you know, contractors were always. I mean, we had a zoning meeting when I was on the zoning commission, you know, ten years ago or twelve years ago. Wi- with like two hundred people showed up to City Hall and packed the common council chamber. Angry because we were slowly zoning out contractor, uh, yards, and these weren't the big giant. Horrible contractor yards that people are afraid of, this was zoning restricting. The ability of a small contractor to locate in Norwalk, they were having to go to Bridgeport and then get on ninety-five every day. You know, I've always said they're the, I'll get off my soapbox in a second, but they are the backbone. Of small business in Norwalk and delis and car tire places and mechanics and everybody. There's a whole economy that's based on small contractors, and, you know, Norwalk is the. It is a, is a, a focus of that small business, and we should be encouraging that in any way we can, including making that as of right.
Yeah, I, I mean, if that consensus is you wanna shift it to the site plan approval section versus the, um, special permit, I, I have no issue with that.
Well, it's not, it's not, you know, I would share, I was just sharing that, and it's up to the commission, I'm not gonna sit here like a dictator and say, you have to. I, uh, I, I, but I've just made my argument in terms of, this was all discussed at length. And I don't think an army of contractors need to show up again, but they made their point. Uh, and I was, uh, you know, uh. All transparency, I'm a small contractor, and I have to keep my trucks in Stamford. Because I can't afford to keep them anywhere in Norwalk, uh, because we're so restrictive. Um, believe it or not, so anyway, that's, um. That, but I, the, you know, I'm in, I'm a part of the contractor community, and this is a big issue, uh, among contractors. Uh, in, in terms of, you know, so I, I would just do anything we can to encourage. Uh, the ease of locating that, otherwise they just park, they park on the street, and we all know that, they park in our neighborhoods. And you have contractor trucks parking in backyards and, you know, people doing illegal things, uh, because they can't afford to do otherwise.
Mike, I think in the industrial zone, um, subcommittee. We were trying to define what is a contractor, you know, and that's, so what, what zone are you parking in in Stamford? What type of zone?
It's a commercial zone, you know, that, there's multiple trucks parked in the back, it's a, uh, you know, it's. It's a contractor yard area, uh, I actually don't even know the name of the zone, but it's, it's an area where there's all contractor yards. But the, uh.
Parking space on somebody else's business.
No, oh, well, it's, it is rented, it's a rented space, you know, it's a legal commercial. Space that they rent out, like, like, you know, it's common to have one, that's what the guy was doing, in fact, that, uh. We approved last week, uh, he, he said he wasn't going to do it, remember, he said. He was being approached, it was the computer parts person, he said he was being approached by contractors constantly. To park their trucks on their property, and that he was refusing to allow that, but. But that's how, and he said they're desperate, these people are desperate, and well, that's, that is the. There is a desperation out there for legal space. But, but, uh, this, I'm, I'm not worried about expanding that definition, the indoor. Con- contractor parking facility was a definition to actually, you know, provide. A legal space that was not gonna be an impact, a hi- highly impactful, uh, with adverse impacts. Because it's indoors and it's mostly vans, it's smaller vehicles to be parked inside, no store. Be parked inside, no store, no outside storage of any bulk material. So so that I I think that that actually has been successful. In encouraging more more contractors. I'm just saying it shouldn't be a special permit because of the. The need to spend so much money on consultants and lawyers in order to get a special permit through. It's very high standard. Uh, uh, to achieve and I and I I don't see any problem with not. Uh, with just making it an as of right because it's not a, it's never anything that's going to be a huge impact on anyone. Uh, is that, did I, did I make that clear? I. Yep, I'm glad you were discussing.
I I I do have a, I I I do have a pushback on that very last comment that you made. That you said that you don't see how it could have a negative impact. On it on any or any neighborhood or anyone. Is that what you, I just want to clarify.
I was only referring to indoor parking facility, indoor co- co- not contractor yards in general.
Okay.
In indoor contractor parking facility is a is basically a contractor who shows up. And puts his vehicles in a garage at night and and the and not parking them outside and no outdoor storage. So there's no loading, there's no beeping at six AM, you know, none none of that.
Right.
Piles of stuff. It's it's basically a, you know, uh, it's and and it's for all the people that you have to call. You know, on a on, you know, in an emergency or plumber, electrician, roofer. All of those, there's literally hundreds of those contractors in Norwalk who are struggling to find legal space. To to run their business out of.
We we've definitely had this debate um at other meetings and I and I love the way that you present it. And it's definitely something that Norwalk needs in terms of its economy and serving sing it servicing the communities. My my pushback is when it's violated.
Yes.
Yes.
You made and you made that point clear earlier too, you know, this this is going to be enforced.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I I was cheering you on there. Uh, I I I right and. So I separate that out from the contractor yard issue in general. But it this the uh, I'm talking about. Literally, the majority of contractors are not storing big piles of stuff in the back, you know. They're parked up and down our street every night, you know.
Now, that's what confuses me. You're not talking about a contractor yard. A contractor yard is where they're doing, you know, crushing stone in there. Piling up materials, et cetera. That's what I think of with a contract.
Causing dust, yes, noise, pollution.
A parking lot for people's trucks.
Well, that's that's why we expanded it to business one and two, you know, ten years ago and called it indoor. Well, I can't always get messed up. Indoor contractor parking facility, uh, which was.
An outdoor contractor parking facility, if you had a parking lot and you allowed vans.
Yes, it's a specific that you cannot store vehicles overnight. Uh, you can't park vehicles. I think it was over half a ton. Uh, Steve, I, if you remember that definition, I think it was. It it's like basically cars you can park outside, but not not large vehicles.
Well, so that's the issue is changing the definition of what can be parked outside, right?
Yeah, that's what I think we tried to do. That was.
Versus what is a contractor yard, you mean?
Yes, exactly. The contract yard is one thing. A parking lot where you can park large vehicles is another thing, at least in my mind.
Yeah, we have three definitions that I think address the three different scenarios. So you have the, you have a. This is like what you were just speaking with Gailing, uh, excuse me, Gailing, about you're just parking vehicles outside. So this would be, think of Concord Street. There's the um. I forgot which oil company it is, but they have their oil trucks parked out there. That that's the category they would fall into. They just can't store the materials there. If you're going to go full on or moving dirt around, we got rocks, we got everything, masonry supplies um. But plus all the equipment, then you fall into the earth processing definition. And then for what we were just speaking about is the um. Indoor contractor facility. I just got rid of parking because I just thought it was kind of unnecessary. Um, and that's basically what those guys are.
So that's an inside parking lot in a building for.
Right.
And then the commercial vehicle storage yard is an outside parking lot with trucks. And they're both allowed uses.
In different zones.
Right, yeah, okay.
Depending on what zone you're in, you can do this use. If you're in this zone, you can do this use. But with a, if you, there's also caveats built into that based on. Um, the size of the facility too. So and we can always adjust those variables as we continue the conversation. If you think this. It shouldn't be on a lot that's bigger than a quarter acre then. Or if it's on a lot that's bigger than a quarter acre, that should go to a special permit based on the size. You you can put all those little restrictions that you feel are appropriate.
Yeah, but I don't think what JJ is talking about when she talks about a contractor yard is what is that is a parking lot, right, JJ?
That is correct. Thank you, indeed. I'm not, I'm not referring to indoor parking or even outdoor parking. I'm referring to operations.
Yeah.
And that that's the most restrictive of all of them.
Yeah, and that should be special permit, uh, you know, the. However, you've defined that. But but the 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 impetus of the indoor uh facility in business one and two was. If you can imagine strip malls, where all they're all over Norwalk, you know, lining Connecticut Avenue, Westport Avenue. A lot of them have spaces in the back with their garage doors and their spaces and as retail was declining. We couldn't ever have contractors move into those spaces legally. So this has actually fulfilled the need. It's to use existing infrastructure to uh encourage a a. You know, a a business need. Uh, and I think it's been, I I don't have any statistics to prove it, but I know. That they've been able to rent out a lot of these under underused or unused spaces, which is the i- ideal. Uh, you know, condition of zoning is to encourage economic activity that is not, you know, not impactful. But yes, these are all, this is a really good debate to have. Uh, in terms of getting everybody's head around what it is we're actually talking about.
Steve Kleppen.
Lou, you're muted, so.
I. I apologize. Um, I tried to speak before. I wondered why nobody was listening to me. I thought I was home.
That's why I kept on going.
Uh, is is this something that we we need to discuss further and and um. Uh, change existing existing or proposed regulation on? If it if it is, I'd suggest when we discuss this matter further. Uh, that we specifically set aside some to- time to talk about this. This part of uh, uh, the rezoning of the industrial area of the city.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, we probably have to have a maybe a truncated indoor more specific. Version of this conversation again. I'd urge everybody to read through the materials again and the report if you. Have questions and feel free to reach out to me. Um, and then we can um. Have the conversation again and then I'll, you know, the those those highlighted yellow areas. Hopefully, I'll have a little more. Firm recommendation on some of those and I'll provide some examples of. Some of the parcel sizes that are referred to in the definition. So you get a sense of the scale and scope of what we're talking about.
Okay, but on the on the specifically on this piece of the issue. Um, one, one of the best ways of educating us, because you do it so well. It for you to just prepare a short presentation on it. Um, so that yours is the only voice we hear and then we can have at one another. That makes sense.
Can I ask a question unrelated to this when when we're done?
Sure, of course, Richard.
Steve, I wonder um how many properties uh were made nonconforming with the zone changes?
I have that. I don't have it top of my head, but I do have the, I have it mapped somewhere. I can show you that next time too.
Okay.
So if 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 you do have that information, I I I would wonder um how many uh properties are rendered nonconforming. And in what direction that goes? Is it residential that is made nonconforming or is it is it industrial property? I mean, I I'll wait for your map, but that's what I would be interested to know.
I think I already mapped both of those, so I think I have that.
Thank you.
Steve, along the same lines is what Richard just asked you. Once the proposed industrial changes, let's just say they go through the way they've been suggested. Do you think that contractor parking, not in buildings, but. On physical properties, but not inside a garage, is that going to increase or decrease?
I don't think it's going to increase. I I I don't think it would be a big statistical change one way or the other, to be honest with you. I don't I don't think that's a big, big jump.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, I mean, if you think about, I think the controlling factor on that is just how expensive and valuable the land is. I mean, it's it's to dedicate land just to park trucks is, you know, compared to what else you could do on the property. I think makes it not the smartest business model, just my two cents.
Okay, but if you take that sort of same thought and you look at a supermarket. With massive amounts of parking and a lot of it's just sitting there vacant. Is that, you know, is that a good use? I I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just pointing it out. And if if as a commission, we think that we're trying to encourage small businesses to stay here in Norwalk. Then how might we go about making it so? Not so that in a residential zone, somebody's going to have, you know, five. Vans with ladders and whatever other kind of trucks contractors use parked all over the street. But how do we make space for them so that people like Mike don't have to drive to Stamford to park? Some type of work truck or that it doesn't have to be in a garage?
So two things with that. Um, one, so the whole the whole MLK corridor currently doesn't allow any of that. So you really can't park any commercial vehicles through most of that area. So we kind of loosened up those restrictions, maybe to allow some of that and maybe pull them out of. All the residential neighborhoods like in Olean, Cassuth and all that, because if you drive through there, there's. Every other house has some kind of landscape truck or tree truck or somebody's in there that probably shouldn't be there. So we're trying to. Allow areas where we can pull them out. Ideally, somebody would set up like a, you know. You know, like almost like a condo type situation where he has bays or areas set aside for different contractors to rent space like. You get a locker and you can park all your vehicles in this spot. This is, and the next guy's got the same kind of business, but we're just sharing space. Um, but talking about specifically, if you're thinking about like the Route One corridor and you have all this big. Sea of parking for like all like a strip mall or something. The new zoning regulations are going to alter how that parking interfaces with the street and where it can be located. Um, and hopefully will kind of rightsize that parking and maybe if there was extra space available, they could. Also park vehicles in the back so long as they were out of sight and weren't viewed by the street and interfering with any kind of residential problems.
All right, then, Steve, let's 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 have that conversation um, uh, the next time we discuss this.
Okay.
All right. Okay, let's move on on the agenda. Uh, next agenda item is a discussion of the twenty two twenty three capital budget. Uh, with us uh, um, reviewing it and hopefully taking action. Steve, you want to lead off on that?
Ferguson or Kleppen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Steve. Uh, Steve Kleppen.
I was going to punt to Steve Ferguson, but I'm happy to pull up the resolution.
No, no, I'll go. You pull it up and then and then I'll go over it, Steve, if you don't mind.
Yeah, just you you talk and I'll figure out where I put it.
Sounds good. Well, the well, the well, the good thing about this this year, um. We worked in unison together and we were able to put through a recommendation for the mayor. Um, that was very different from what we did in the past. Uh, this year, we just added items that we think. Was a priority for the P O C D. Um, and that was highlighted uh in in the memo. And then uh Lou uh being our uh uh chairman of the planning and zoning, uh, he actually endorsed it at the bottom. So it can go to our mayor, to our 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 mayor properly. So in nutshell, it just went over how we combine both commissions. Uh, how we uh, what is comprised of and named those hours that was a part of the committee. And then it outlined uh the library, the mansion, general drainage, storm rate, water management, coastal resiliency. And the Wall Street uh corridor that we deemed um that should be part of the P O C D uh following with the I T. Uh, for the five hundred thousand. Uh, with that being outlined, um. We we feel that this um presents uh a a. A total um a commitment from uh the Planning and Zoning Commission that the mayor will look at it. Um, and make a sound recommendation from the departments uh to the finance director to us now to the mayor, then to the common council. Uh, we feel that this was presented uh properly uh in in unison with all involved and um we're very happy to present it to you all to look at.
And actually, we'd like more than just a look at by you. Uh, we'd like a motion to approve the letter uh so that we can forward it to the mayor.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got the motion by Steve and Darius. Did you second it?
I did.
Okay, so we've got uh a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Great job. I'm going to vote for it when we get to that point.
Thank you, Mike. A- a- any other comments? All right, if not, uh, Steve, uh, I have the feeling on this one, we can do a show of hands. So all in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. All right, uh, the letter then I guess will be on its way. I haven't signed that yet, Steve, have I? Uh. If if you just leave it, you just leave it upfront, uh, I'll come in tomorrow and sign it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, thank, uh, thank you all for uh the vote on that and uh, I thank Steve and uh. Uh, the other members of the uh, uh, committee uh for carrying this through. All right, uh, uh, next item, um. Uh, our um, uh, approval of minutes from the February sixteenth meeting. Um, from what I can see, I think we were all at that meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the sixteenth? Uh, Tammy is moved, Darius is seconded. Um, any comments, corrections? Again, then let's do this with a vote of hands. All those in favor? Um, any opposed? Any abstained? Richard uh is abstaining. Uh, the motion passes. Next comments of uh the director and um. Um, I think Steve wants to talk a bit about parking.
Yeah, and we don't have to have a prolonged conversation about that. Um. But the in thinking about where we want to go with the zoning regulations rewrite, the question of parking always. Keeps popping up um. And and initially TPUDC had indicated they kind of wanted um us to carry the ball on what we wanted to see. Um, I am just starting to look at what they sent over and I think they've actually recommended lowering the standards in certain areas. Particularly around like uh the train station and so forth, which kind of makes sense in in kind of the grand scheme of things, but I don't have. Firm handle on exactly what they're proposing yet. And I and I shared, uh, you know, Nick had sent around some material, so I forwarded over the video for you and I think it's pretty clear that, you know, even in. Thinking about the application we were talking about earlier with, you know, a thousand something spaces, just. I know it's needed and I know there's parking needed. So part of the kind of thinking that I I I would recommend us. Undertaking is. A, it's it's trying to come up with the right standard, but B, um, in certain areas, are we trying to change the. You know, not just change people's minds and perceptions, but change their habits in terms of if we're trying to make a a more walkable, dense. You know, downtown area, if we just keep providing, you know, abundant or too much parking. Then we're going to just end up with too much parking and a lot of them, you know, more asphalt. And the other part is if they put that into structured parking, that just. Jumps the building cost way up because structured spaces are are a minimum of thirty thousand. If you do underground, you're probably. Because structured spaces are, are a minimum of thirty thousand. If you do underground, you're probably talking forty thousand a space, so. It adds a tremendous amount of cost and those costs get passed on to someone and typically that's gonna be. The homeowner or the renter, whomever it, it might be. And I can't say if we don't. Um, you know, we drop the parking out of the, the equation somewhat that. You know, they're, the rents are gonna come down precipitously because I'm sure they're going to just go with whatever the market will bear either way. But I think it does add to the cost and those costs are, have to be carried by somebody because the developer is not gonna carry those costs, so. That's kind of the impetus for the discussion, the last piece, and then I'll, you know, see what everybody else thinks. Was, you know, we are proposing to, um, at least initially eliminate parking requirements on Washington Street. Um, basically, Washington Street's pretty much built out anyway and there's like, I think, one or maybe two properties that actually have their own parking. So Washington Street seems to work pretty well without any parking. And the other area is Wall Street. And when we redid the zoning for Wall Street a few years ago, we, we lowered parking down quite a bit. And we actually eliminated, eliminated it for historic buildings under certain, certain circumstances. And eliminated it for change of use, but I think if we keep Wall Street. Um, the height of Wall Street at the propose, at the current allowed heights, even if some of those buildings do expand. Um, there's sufficient public parking that's completely underutilized at this point, so not requiring parking in the future will. Really help development in that area and prop it up quite a bit. So those are just kind of some of the big picture things we're talking about right now. And I didn't have anything prepared beyond what I just said.
Steve, are you looking for comment at this point or?
Yeah, and I think it's more of a free flow, free flow discussion.
Um, I, I just, I, I know that I have said this a number of times before, so I'll just make it brief and say that. Um, I absolutely agree with what you're saying in areas where, um, you know, somebody might be inconvenienced a little bit. Because they gotta walk another half a block to park their car. But in the areas like that apartment building that we approved two meetings ago, um, where. There's only street parking and at least in my view, driving around, adding six more cars to that street. I don't know how it's gonna take it. Um, so I just think that there should be. Um, a different way of looking at some of the older neighborhoods that, um, that basically just have. Uh, street parking if there's, if we're gonna cut the parking down to the one point three like we did for unit. Um, and the other thing, um, that goes along with the enforcement issue. I'm remembering when I first got on the board, we listened to an application for. Um, like a seven eleven kind of thing on, on Main Avenue with a gas station.
Eleven, yes.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I remember.
One of the things that they said that they were going to ask for was to eliminate. About thirty feet of on-street parking so that they could bring a truck in and the neighbors went wild about their parking spaces. And I walked up and down that street and it's all multifamily houses and under the zoning requirements, there's supposed to be two parking spaces a unit. And almost all of the backyards were filled with dump trucks and pickup trucks and, and tractors. And the cars were parked out on the street because the landlord had rented the spaces out to other people. So enforcement is an issue too. And I'll be quiet, that's all I wanted to say.
I'll just say one other thing about what Richard just said. Th- this was actually one of the fairly rare instances. Where we uh, killed the project. We, we approve it. And it is.
It was a Cumberland Farm, Cumberland Farms on Main Avenue.
I'm always the one that's one boat off.
Yeah, not a seven eleven, but it was a Cumberland Farms. I remember.
Uh, I stand corrected.
Walter, Walter, to help the situation, ladies and gentlemen, it's Main Street, not Main Avenue, but it's okay.
Okay, uh, a- any further discussion about um, this parking issue? There's certainly much more to come.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting. I'm glad we're looking at it. You know, there's a lot of cities who are moving. Boston just went through. Then fully removed parking requirements across the whole city. I know we're not the same size as Boston. I think Steve's email that he sent about Fayetteville, Arkansas, having limited impacts, like, I think it's worth a real good look. I get that the residential angle is definitely concerning. It's been enforcement's a thing. But I think the totality, we should really consider this as we go through into the rewrites. I think this is an opportunity to. Really shift things and actually encourage growth in places that we haven't been able to, that hasn't really sparked before. Um, and it seemed like people are also looking to do phased approaches. I think San Diego did a two-phase approach. Where they started with around the train stations, higher density areas, saw how that went and then expanded to the rest of the city. Once they felt comfortable with it. I think we have a lot of things to play with and I'm, I'm glad folks are really interested in uh, actually. Taking this issue up because I think for a while, I know it's something I've been really interested about, so I'm excited to hear that we're talking about it now.
Uh, whole books have been written about this stuff, of course, right? Except that video summed up it all. It, it was so enjoyable. I don't know if anybody didn't get a chance to watch it, the one that Nick uh, shared. It, it really was educational. Uh, and I, I'll just add on to this. You know, I live in a neighborhood, multifamily uh, neighborhood and a lot of the houses. Uh, we have some on-street parking issues, which are normal, but a lot of the houses uh, can't. Park the cars because we have this weird law about no parking in the front yard setback. And I, the intention was good to prevent front yards from being paved over, but we have a more restrictive law. Than any other town that I'm aware of. And so people are forced to park in the street. Uh, whether they're legal or illegal apartments, doesn't matter. They're, I mean, in terms of the impact. It's that there's not enough parking on the sites. Uh, and, and so I think part of the discussion. Of this whole parking thing is that we have to look at the front yard setback issues. It's something I've been just sharing with. Steve Kleppen offline a bit.
Mike, Mike, when we held our first public hearing, um, uh, about the fact that we were hiring. A, a consultant to work on us with the rewrite of the regulations. The first issue that came up was uh, from one of our um, uh, judicial judges that handles. Uh, issues like this. And that was the first thing he complained about. Uh, the number of tickets he has to deal with, uh, that residents get from uh, parking in their own front yards.
Well, you know, I don't want to see parking all over the front yards, but we can, we can allow some with. Proper screening, et cetera, with pervious paving, you know, that allows water to trickle down through. And so, so we're not adding to stormwater runoff. Anyway, these things are all possible. I've just thrown it out there that thi- this is all gonna be part of. We're waiting for the consultant to see what they, what they do and if we have to add to it, uh, we will, but it's a. It's, it's a very important issue to, to just bring up what Richard just brought up, you know, that. That uh, on-street parking in neighborhood issue is, is, is big. It's not going away.
Right. All right, um, are there comments from any of the commissioners? If not, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Richard, Richard made the motion. Tammy and JJ both uh, seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, uh, we are adjourned with a reminder, our next meeting is uh, March sixteenth. See you all then. Stay well.
Good night all, thank you.